Okay, well, hold on.
Which is just audio.
It's fine.
We've already had this.
And people are...
It's our turn.
Okay. You guys are good.
I get between.
All right, you guys ready? Okay.
All right. I'd like to call the village council meeting, September 30th work session to order. I shall we have a full quorum. And I'd like to, I need a motion to allow council members, including myself, to participate remotely.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, I'm gonna ask for adoption of the agenda and then I'll get into what, I'm gonna hand the reins over to Kim because she's there. And Kim, I mentioned in my text, they have reins and not whips.
Got it.
So make sure you use those appropriately.
I think very much.
I'll turn it over to you now, Kim, for the adoption of the agenda going forward.
All right, you want me to take over now?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so I've got a couple of things, I'm gonna kinda move around some stuff since Christina's not here yet. Um, what I'd like to do is move the number C, or letter C, village hall, to after communications. So items of discussion will become C, open topics will become D, communications will become E, and village hall will become F. Under items of discussion, I'd like to remove number two. Um, as we had a meeting with the Park Circle Greenway Board, um, we're gonna get a meeting together with Andy, Derek, and Bob to go over planting, since we still don't have a determination there. Number three, Christina has done whatever she needs to do. And number eight, uh, that was me, and I talked about, talked to Park Circle Greenway, and we're gonna make that a Boy Scouts project.
So removing item...
That was the one forty, I'm sorry. It was two...
Two, three, three, and eight.
Which are the roundabout plantings, the part-time event planter, and trail markers.
Yep. All right. Joe or Bob, do you guys have anything you wanna change or amend to add?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Um, we don't have open topics. Do we do that now, or...
Yeah, or...
You don't have to add, you don't have to.
Yeah, just when we get there.
Yeah, okay. I'll do it when I get there.
Okay. Jamie? Amy? All right, so I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Further discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. There are no presentations. So we're moving on to C, items of discussion. Number one, discuss and consider waiving procurement policy and awarding contract for construction of the internal preserve trail to Blue Ridge Trail Works. Derek, he's here. I know. Yes, sir. Cracking hooks. I mean reins. Reins. Reins.
What are we all hearing there?
The first one. You're up first.
Blue Ridge.
Second, third, fourth, and then...
We're waving. We're waving.
And I'd like to wave.
We're waving.
Um, I've reached out to, you know, vendors that I've used in the past and a couple that I haven't even used but had, you know, made contact with at different points. And, um, tricky told, like, Blue Ridge is the only one who I have had any dialogue with. I don't know if people are just backed up or busy or don't have workers right now, but, um, you know, we've always maintained a good relationship with them. Scott's more than willing to come and walk properties and show us what he do and what he won't do. And, um, he's consistently one of the lowest, if not the lowest, price per linear foot, um, construction person. So it would be my recommendation that we move forward with the, uh, to preserve internal trail with Blue Ridge Trail Works. They've done all the other trails in town except for the park.
You don't have to persuade me. They've done great work and, you know, I think they're, I think they're the obvious choice. They already know what we're after. They do good work, they have the pricing.
He's the one that actually walked it and measured it, um, you know, to give me the specs for us to budget off of.
What, what concerns me is that we keep getting three quotes and we keep using the same person. Eventually, people are gonna not call you back and not give you quotes. And we, we have a relationship with this person, so I know that we've talked about, you know, just basically figuring out how much luck we have in doing some sort of larger contract, like we did for the concrete. Um, so, and I know you were gonna start kinda looking into that. So I, I'm good with, with waiving the requirement and going ahead and awarding this to them, so they can get started.
And I, I'll make a comment. Um, at the beginning of the year, what we'll try to do is figure out how many trail miles we will have, um, and do a RFP for the total mileage at the beginning of the year, similar to what we did with McConnell. So it'll be one month sum and we can draw down from it, but we just haven't got to that point yet because all of the greenway trails have been in that capital project and we just really never knew when we were gonna do certain trails. So that's why we've never done it that way.
Okay. That's, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense, 'cause again, people are just gonna stop returning calls if we don't use them. Yeah.
Yeah. It sure is.
Derek, when he walked all these trails, did he see anything that was covered in here? Did he say, "Oh, my gosh, we gotta add a little more here because it's messed up and, you know, the range is not gonna be good here, it's gonna wash, there's potential for a washout here"? Did he kinda identify any of those things too, or did he just kinda walk it and go?
On the preserve internal trail, um, most of it was kinda on a slope, you know, where you do a bench cut.
Yep.
Um, I think once it got to the top of the hairpin, uh, where it kinda gets near Marvin Creek...
Yep.
There would be a, you know, like a creek that we'll have to traverse.
Yeah.
Um, but I don't remember any major issues.
Okay.
Um, do you want me to ask him that specific question?
I mean, just, just so we kinda know upfront. So mildly concerned with, that adds on to Kim, is that if we do this, which I'm fine with, and we come back and, you know, once it's all in and then we go, "Oh, you know, this messed up, so we gotta add another $10,000 to it", and it goes back to him to do, then we're, we're throwing a red flag for people to come in too.
Yeah. But I can tell you, and I don't, I don't think you were part of this original, but we walked, uh, when they were doing, the very first project, we walked it. And he explained to us about his process and how he does things. And he has, uh, a minimum percentage slope on any of his trails, so that prevents washout, so that the water doesn't run too much. I mean, this guy really, I was impressed, um, from a grading standpoint, from my experience, I was very impressed with this guy. He's, he really knows trails, and I don't get that feeling that he's gonna do anything that's gonna jeopardize the quality of his work. So, uh, I just wanted to throw that in there to you, that, that I think that your concern is gonna be handled very well. I think he's, he really knows what he's doing.
Well, typically, when you do an RFP and you go with the lowest person, even if you have a full complement of people that are doing, putting, and you go with the lowest person, typically, that lowest person is the one that gives you to get it to work.
Right.
And then he goes, "Oh, well, you know, we need to do this, and we need to do that", and then he's higher than the highest person, and that's where the red flag comes in.
I got it.
So I just wanted, and your point takes care of my concern, so.
Yeah, I mean, as far as this particular guy and this particular project, that's why, what I was addressing. I get your point on the RFP, if somebody else comes in and bids low and then starts changing roles, so that I get that, certainly get that angle too, so.
Derek, he's done both Tolmore Phases and...
And repaired Amber Meadows.
And repaired Amber Meadows, okay. And they've been fine. We haven't had, like, any issues. He didn't do, he didn't do Tolmore first, did he?
Yes, he did.
But that was where the easement was, and we just put it there, not realizing that it was gonna wash out. 'Cause didn't we move it eventually?
We rerouted just a little portion, you know, where it just sits so low and flat.
Okay, all right.
That one was a challenge anyway, and I know when we initially were looking at the right-of-ways, we actually petitioned to move the right-of-ways inward some because of wet areas. There were a lot of, like, swampy areas that were challenges over there. But, uh, as far as what I could discern from all of it after the completed process, they, they did a really good job dealing with it.
No, I mean, it looks, I mean, I've walked it, it's, it's over Tolmore, it's great. I do know where that trail is, by the way.
That was the first project, that first phase was, was the one that we walked, when we all walked that day with him, and he showed us his, his process and how he was gonna do everything.
Okay. So you guys are good waiving this?
Yeah.
Okay. Bob, Joe, do you guys have any issues with waiving the... Okay, all right, they, they got thumbs up. So I'm gonna need a motion to waive the procurement policy and award the contract for construction of the internal preserve trail to Blue Ridge Trail Works not to exceed, or, for $46,035 with a $3,965 contingency fund.
So move.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next up is number two, which is Marvin Day planning and fundraising.
We've moved a couple of things around.
Yeah.
All right, so...
I just took stuff off your plate.
Did you skip the, um...
On purpose?
Did you do away with the number three?
Uh-huh. Uh-huh, 'cause Christina said we're, we don't, yeah, we're good.
Yeah. So we had a work session with PRG and Councilman Line, what, Tuesday?
Yep.
Very productive meeting. Um, we sketched out a rough schedule of the event. We don't have a way for them to see it, do we?
See what?
Since I just printed it.
This, is it on, do you have it on, is it on the computer?
I, I don't know where the file is.
It's right here.
Can you send it?
Or is it on, is it on the B drive?
Not yet.
No, we can't share it. And we can put a copy of this in your guys' box, I'm gonna get it to you later.
They're, they're both coming to the office right after this meeting.
Oh, then we can give it to them.
All right, guys? Here.
Yeah.
Yep, see? They don't even know what they said yes to.
They know better, they'll get volunteered for something if they don't.
Yes, 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 I pay attention, yes, yes, yes. Um, Derek, you want me to talk?
Um, Jamie, do you want to talk? I can talk. Um, I just sent it to you guys.
You want me to talk?
It might pop up. Really, what I've given them is just the first two tabs. It's an Excel document, um, that our finance officer, Jamie, helped me put together. Um, it's, there's one sheet that is all the sort of assignments, kinda broken down by person with their tasks, and it's just an update from the previous meeting. I know, we do have to fix that for me.
Print it on.
And then, and then there's the schedule, kinda broken down by location, uh, just to kinda show where we might have potential conflicts, overlaps, gaps. Um, right now, we don't have any overlaps, which is what we're going for. Um, and then we're gonna start to go back and kinda fill in, um, food trucks and what type of food trucks we want at various locations and for how long, and, um, I'll try to get it all on one sheet for you.
What are we actually, what are we actually missing from the schedule?
We're really not missing anything.
Right.
We went over all this and it kinda is what it is. It's just really out there for you guys to say, "I love it, don't change it", or "I don't, I really wanna see, you know, a clown do some face painting at village hall with Austin", or...
I wanna dunk tank with Joe with it.
I mean, that's really all there is anymore, is, I mean, this is, these are all the main things that we've talked about for months now. You know, the horses, the equestrian tours off-site, and...
I mean, we're, I mean, it's good. I mean, I think this is, I don't, again, I don't think we need to do too much the first year.
It's there. I mean, you know, you could chew on it a little bit, but I say move on to talking about sponsorships.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I really don't have... I think the schedule looks really good. Um, I will tell you that Jamie and I are gonna go to Firethorn next Wednesday morning.
That's not a whole lot.
And we talked to them about kinda what they're gonna do, so we'll have some more details, um, for that. Um, besides that, my thing is the Raptor Center, they are all in, they're super excited, and we've got them on the park.
Are we doing the Walk-a-Thon to benefit them?
We can. Yeah.
I mean, I think PRG was in favor of that. Are they up into receiving that?
Absolutely. And they said that if there is a bird release, that they could potentially name it Marvin.
Well, they can always get that.
Yeah. So...
That'd be cool.
That'd be cool, yeah. So that's, so that's, I mean, I like the schedule. I don't, again, I don't think we need to do too much. I mean, this is, this is actually a lot of stuff. Derek, fix it.
Here comes the Excel group.
I decided to put it on one page. You're like, this is gonna drive me crazy.
So, did you save it in that format?
Well, it's just, I just printed all columns on one page.
So...
That's all. Great function.
Potato of the time.
There we go. Not showing up or anything.
For us old folks that can't see, it's bigger.
This would need glasses.
So the one thing I thought, I was trying to think of, all things Marvin.
Yeah.
Um, oh, yeah, thank you. And we're talking about Boy Scout stuff.
Yeah.
Should we not integrate, have the Boy Scouts do a table, have the Boy Scouts do some, something, or at, at least ask them that they can be, maybe it's a village hall, maybe it's somewhere else, where they're here to talk, just, just to be there, just the troop, troop so-and-so from Marvin is here, let the kids work their own schedule, but talk about the things that they do, talk about the projects they've done in the past.
What if they're doing a project at the park?
That'd be even better.
While they're...
That's great, that's great, and I, I think that would be...
For the school or something.
Absolutely.
You got Mike Bellamy's contact?
Yeah.
I, I can walk across the street and talk to him.
I mean, I got, I mean, my son's in his pack, so I've got all this...
He's my across-the-street neighbor, I can call him.
Oh, okay.
But to have...
I guess everybody knows.
But to have...
I think I offer to call him.
Someone from the, the troop leader, have a table or something, just to get that information.
Yep.
I don't know how far this, I don't know how far this goes, but again, I'm just trying to think of people that maybe wanna move to Marvin, let's just say they're, they're living in downtown Charlotte area, I gotta get out of this mess. What is about Marvin? So can we have someone from the elementary school at the elementary school that day to talk about the school? Someone from Marvin High School at Marvin High School to talk about the school?
That's a good idea.
Information. So, so it's all about Marvin. We're promoting Mark, we're promoting, this is a promotion of Marvin from a historic standpoint, but also from a today's standpoint and a future standpoint.
Yeah, I know we keep talking about having, like, stuff with Gene Stowe at village hall. We need to make sure, I feel like that's gonna get lost somewhere. Like, I don't, I haven't seen it anywhere in a while, so I just wanna make sure that that is, like, we've got a display, we've got his books, have him there that day, um...
Can we have...
Or have the movie on.
That's a great, that's a great point. Can we have, and Christina, other Christina, can work on this, between concerts, between acts...
Oh, yeah, do it then, instead of having music. That's a good idea.
Right. We're gonna do a thing on Gene, let Gene Stowe run his thing, and if he wants to add to it or take away from it, so people that haven't done anything, or they just wanna come to the concert, they get a flame roll.
That's a good idea.
So what, I was just thinking, how do we promote Marvin for those handful or bucketful of people that come in here from out of town, or just visiting or something?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, let's do, let's see, I mean, definitely, I would say, if he wants to be at village hall, like, during the day, as people come in to tour it, then he can, you know, talk, whatever, but have, like, a booth set up where people can buy his books at the high school, and then let him do his talk, have the video, the movie, you know, play, real clip-up or whatever. And that's a good idea.
And if there's any more things that people can think about, um, that...
That's so good.
Past, present, and future of Marvin can, um, can do would be great.
I like it.
Especially the Boy Scouts, because kids, you know, parents just maybe just moved to here.
Yep. I'll call, I'll call Mike and, um, every weekend and talk to him about that and just check out on this.
Do we have a Cub Scout?
We do, and I just sent my wife a text to see if she can give me the name of the Cub Scout leader now. She used to be the Cub Scout leader at Sandy Ridge. She made her pick it over. Mike might know too, I'm not sure about that. I'll see, I'll try to get that for you as quick as possible.
All right. Jamie wants, Jamie wants to talk about the logo. I'm lying. Jamie Lyon wants to talk about the logo.
Is there another pack at Marvin?
What about you?
No, we're not, nothing.
On the back of the horse.
So, I, yes, I will talk about, 'cause I, I was telling someone this about Marvin just yesterday, and I got so excited about it that I couldn't, I couldn't even talk. But, so we're talking about the logo thing, and, and we were coming up with, we started out with the horse, but that's kinda been taken. We got Marvin Mavericks, we got Marvin Mustangs, um, then we're talking about the owl, and then Derek, you, can you read that? If you've got it?
Told you to have it ready.
So what happened was, is, we're talking about the owl, and I, I really like the owl.
Yep.
Um, but I think this came across, 'cause no one is going to think of this.
No.
They're gonna...
Wore that shirt.
What? That's why I wore this shirt. So, and we've come across the bluebirds.
If she's not still in charge, you know, she took over.
All right. Go, Derek.
All right, so this came from a lady who has lived here since the late eighties, early nineties, been coming to Marvin since the seventies.
Before it was Marvin.
Before it was Marvin, yeah. She said, "Well, Marvin has always bragged about being an equestrian community, so the horse would make sense, but the way the land has been developed, there's not a little room for equestrian activities. That might make, that might make the horse a bit hypocritical. I love birds, and I know that we have various birds and owls in the Wildlife Foundation. I think the encouragement of removing the bluebird from the endangered species list is a noble thing. And so I said, is that why so many people push for the bluebird houses? And Mary's, uh, Mary Sykes had gotten me some for the park, and we put up on the greenway. Um, and she said, "Yes, their preferred building site has been fence posts with holes and with farmland being converted to housing, their habitat has disappeared. That's why the bluebird houses are the shape and the height that they are."
So with, with that, I think we have now another option, as far as the, what do you wanna call it, the, our...
Mascot.
Mascot for Marvin, to be the horse, the owl, and the bluebird. And honestly, I think just...
Uh-oh, what else? You got another one?
No.
Okay.
Remember, or it could be the bluebird and the owl.
Bragging about the horse. That's what Austin wants so bad, he thinks he's a ted.
It's the ultimate joke. It's the greatest.
You know, I, I get all these points, but I think that, you know, keeping, the only way we're gonna keep the equestrian presence in Marvin is if we keep pushing to keep it, because it is the climate. Everybody's selling out all their horse farms to all these developers, and we're gonna have nothing but horses here. Unless we continue to keep that in our scope, that's what's gonna happen. If we wanna try to keep this as rural as we can, as nice and open as we can with the farms, which everybody loves, I think keeping that push on the equestrian side, keeping that front and center, is not hypocritical, in my opinion, but is more...
It's either that or the...
Keeping it, you know, trying to keep it as much as we can.
Thought this was better.
That's, that's just my thing. I mean, I, I'd love the bluebird and owl and all that, they're part of our community, but I think that if we're gonna, if we don't continue to keep the equestrian park alive, it will die.
So are the bluebirds. The bluebirds are dying. They are. I mean, yeah, so...
Tell that to my fifteen of them that live on my property, 'cause they're all over the place.
So, part, so part of the bluebird thing that we were thinking is, we could have, we could get, like, bluebird house kits and have the kids, you know, they, you know, parents can buy them, the kids can decorate them, and then we can put them out, like, throughout Marvin, as, like, or the scouts could do it as a service project. Listen, I, I'm, I'm, I think the horse is done. I, I mean, I'm so tired of that horse. Um, it, I, I would like to see something that can kind of evolve throughout Marvin Day and have something new. We are a certified wildlife habitat, and I, I, I love the owl, but I really like this idea of the bluebird. So, I really like that. Park Circle Greenway does not want the horse, not that it's their decision, but I'm just telling you.
I, listen, I, I was all in favor of the horse, um, and I, and I do love the horse, because that's who we are. If I think of Marvin, I think of equestrian. But I think we've covered it with the high school and we covered it with the elementary school, um, and we do have those, we're doing the best we can to keep taxes low, so people can keep those, you know, properties. But, you know, when I think of, you know, when I think of, you know, this mascot, and it's, and you gotta remember, there's a, there's a significance in this and importance in this, because once we agree to it, this is something we're gonna, you know, live with for the next fifty years.
Hopefully.
Um, so it's a, I, I think it is a big decision, but, um, I totally agree with what you're saying, and I can picture a catch on, on, on either one of these, but I kinda like the, the bluebird, because people are gonna say, "Where'd you come up with that"? Well, here's why we come up with it, because of this. And plus, it was cheaper to give, you know, kits for bluebird houses than Marvin's.
Yeah. What did Bob do? What do you guys say?
I think, well, I'll, I'll say, I, I wanted the owl, because again, I thought it was something different. I've seen owls on my property from time to time, but I have a bluebird, you know, house, and it, bluebirds all over the place. And I guess with North Carolina, what is it, cardinal? Is the, uh, is the actual bird, I guess?
It is.
They use that symbol. So I actually think the bluebird is a great idea. I think, as I've been through the country, you know, you have these, uh, towns that put either, you know, these bulls or, uh, cows or whatever that were all different painted, with different types of, uh, you know, whatever message they want on them. And I think that's a great idea to take bluebird houses and, you know, they can be distributed, because we are, we do have a ton of bluebirds here. Bluebirds are all over the place. They're, they're, they're fun to see. So I'm for the bluebird.
I would, uh, agree with what, what I'm hearing. I haven't, no, just, I didn't realize there was, uh, is, is it, did I hear correctly that there is a, uh, what's happening with the bluebird? Is it, it's, it's...
Endangered.
It's, it's, okay, so it's not...
It was.
It's not, it's endangered, but yeah, and I will say, I have no idea about bluebird houses. I did have a blue nest, so unfortunately, four little baby bluebirds, and then when I went to check on them again, there was a snake in there, no bluebirds. So, um, I know nothing about how to take care of bluebirds, but I'm all for the bluebirds, so, and I, I think that's probably better, I think it's a better choice than the owl, for what it's worth. I mean, I, I hear owls all the time, I'm not sure I...
Who?
I'll think you win. But I, I'm all, I'm all for it. I think it's a great suggestion, and, um, I don't know, to Jamie's point, we're gonna, this is a decision that will go on for fifty years and stuff. Do we, do we make this decision in one meeting, or do we, you know...
We, we can chew on it, and let's think about it.
Right. You know, we, we usually, something big like that, we would probably chew on a little more than just...
Yeah, and that's totally fine, but I did wanna, Park Circle Greenway has another meeting, their regular meeting on Tuesday morning, so I just wanted, if the bluebird is an option, I wanted to tell Christina Culp so that she can have her artist friend person mock up something for us.
We're getting these for free currently.
Correct.
We ain't gonna get any more.
I know, that's what I'm saying. So I just wanted to see if there was any interest in, in, interest.
Between the birds, I'm with the bluebird, but I still would like to keep the equestrian thing, but, you know, if I had to choose between the owl and the bluebird, the bluebird would be my choice.
All right, I'll, so I'll bring it back to Park Circle Greenway and see what they can work up for those. Okay, next is the sponsor request for... Okay, next is the sponsor request for that. Do you guys have this? Can you put this up? Can you put that up there?
Can. I can do it.
I was gonna say, I don't know what where it's on the YouTube.
So this is.
Use your mouse to top your screen.
This is the sponsor request form, and Christina's gonna try to put it. Christina's gonna try to put it up so you guys can look at it. But we've got four different levels, platinum, gold, silver, and bronze. And we're only gonna have two platinum title sponsors at seventy-five hundred dollars, as many gold at five thousand, as many silver at a thousand, and as many bronze at five hundred. And we have like what they get on it for each like level. And yeah, that's it. I don't know what else to say.
Can I just make one small change?
Yeah.
No pun intended. On silver, instead of small display, just put display.
Yeah.
Gave you all mine too. Did you? Jen probably didn't. Oh, Jen's not here.
Stop Jen.
That's Jerry's thing.
Here you go, ma'am.
No, no, I don't.
Here, you just make the change and give it to him.
They're down here. Let's try to get them up.
Come here, fellas. I think this is great. So I want you guys to look at it and see what you guys think. But I think this is really good, especially since Jamie and I are going to Firethorn on Wednesday. I'd like to get this approved so that we can start talking to people.
Chunk it with it. Looks good to me.
Are you uh trying to?
We're trying to share it. We're working on it.
Do you guys are not? What is on your?
Saw it for a second, but it was blurry.
What about now? Nothing?
Yeah, nothing.
Do you just see us?
Hey, one sec.
I see a gray gray screen. I see you guys. Now it's gone.
Watch this.
I saw it for a moment.
Watch this.
What about now?
What about now?
There you go.
Watch this. Watch this.
Go all up, figure your seat platinum at seventy-five hundred, gold at five thousand.
Can you make it better? You said you can't see it.
Thousand at bronze. So this is. Where are we gonna sponsor what things plaque? Are they plaques or what? What are they?
There we go. Is that better?
Yeah, that's all. Yeah, that's all I heard.
Oh, there. Read it.
You go up just a little bit so he can see platinum.
I don't think I can.
It's cut.
There you go.
Christina says it all the time.
That's pretty cool. I I like it.
She didn't say that to me.
No, not to you.
You know why? Because I've read it.
Really, the importance of a lot of this funding goes to the the bands and the setup for the kind of the end of the day stuff. We're looking into doing fireworks as well at the end. And but, you know, the food trucks were there, so there's not the the cough, the funding that goes into this goes into kind of the the big big ticket items for the finale, but, you know, through the rest of the day. But the food trucks and stuff will be out there. We're looking at, I think we're gonna have some upfront costs with with some food trucks.
Yeah.
But that should take care of it, you know, to get.
You're still drawing on that.
So uh, when is when are we looking to collect the funds? That probably should be on here.
I'm sorry, uh.
Yeah. Because I mean, we could have a cutoff date for that, but when you're talking about when you're talking about bands, they kind of want some upfront money to lock it in.
Deadline is December thirty-third, twenty-twenty. Okay, gotcha.
So.
I didn't read that. Sorry.
It's okay. Did you read it?
I did now. Straight front and center.
It was pretty. I see last platinum and gold, but it's it's limited, but you know, it's.
What do you mean platinum and gold is limited?
Limitations on the gold and or I assume not on silver or bronze, but no limitations on gold.
No.
No. The only limitation is on platinum.
Uh, two, two, yeah.
Now, the the promoting of this would be done traditionally like we've already been doing it. It's through our email base.
Yes, and I think that if we know anybody that has a business that wants to advertise, then it is part of our responsibility being on council to be like, hey, we're having this. Do you want to sponsor it? Here here's the here's the thing, and if you've got questions, I'm happy to answer them. Jamie's happy to answer them. Christina, Derek.
Two, we want to consider adding something at the uh is an option for the platinum that opportunity to um be first in line for that kind of contribution again for the following year because we'll be doing this annually.
Yes, first right of refusal.
Yes, I mean, and and give them a deadline where we would have, okay, first right of refusal. Say, for instance, Firethorn decides to, the club decides to do, which I think would be a perfect thing for them to do. Um, but they would kind of hold that spot and not be taken by them. So give them an option, I would think.
I think so. First right of refusal for the for every year. I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. And then do we Christina's asking, do we want like a a cap at, say, gold, just like we did platinum? Like only two platinum sponsors? Do we want that for gold? Like only five gold sponsors to make it, you know, seem elite?
I think that's a great idea. I'd say five.
Okay. You guys good with five cap at the gold?
Yes.
Okay.
Round, yeah.
Andy?
I'm sorry.
Five, five good cap at gold?
I don't know. Why are we capping the gold?
To make it more like prestigious, like, ooh, there's only five.
Gold too, they have first.
First right of refusal, yeah.
Gold does too. All right, just make that note.
I guess, I I don't know. I mean. Of course, I don't.
I'll get it.
Marvin, we're not gonna get like eighty people.
Not eighty, but I bet we get, I bet this goes quick.
You think?
Mm-hmm.
Well, if you want to put five on, I'm fine with that. I don't disagree with it. I just, um.
I think it makes it more exclusive, and people are gonna be like, oh, shoot, there's only five. I gotta like sign up now. I gotta get my money in. You guys laughing at me?
That's what I think.
I was lonely over here, by the way, before you just got here. I'm by myself.
There's all these bulls looking at me.
So that would put us at forty grand before any silver.
Which would be great, right?
Or bronze. I mean, that would be all. They could get a very nice plaque.
Oh, gosh, more plaques.
I mean, so.
Very nice band.
Yeah, are we good with that?
And that changes that changes.
Bob Seeger and Silver Bullet Band?
What'd you say?
Bob Seeger and Silver Bullet Band?
Yeah.
That's typically how it goes.
Yeah.
All right, we go to this?
Firethorn Country Club.
Yeah.
They might decide to go that direction with it, just since they do the fireworks.
Listen, it's we're talking about advertising Marvin. This is a wonderful advertisement for Firethorn. So hopefully, they'll take advantage of it.
Yeah, well, good you're not hearing us.
Why do you need parking? Oh, for people coming? Yeah, they can. That's, yeah, they've they've got plenty.
All right, so we're gonna do two and five.
Two and five. And you guys are good with this? We'll make the changes and then, but you guys are good with the changes that we've talked about?
Yes.
Joe?
Fine.
Okay. Well, I mean, Andy, Jenny, you guys good?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want a motion for this? No, okay. All right. Anything else for Marvin Day planning and fundraising? Derek?
No, thank y'all.
Okay.
It's good.
It's it's really, it's really, really coming along. Our joint meeting on my birthday, November thirtieth, will be dreadful.
That wasn't subtle at all.
Just want to remind you guys. All right, uh, next up's number four.
Giving you the same thing I got you yesterday.
Oh, Joe, that's so sweet. Thank you.
Perhaps.
Nothing. All right, next up's number four, discussion of American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one funding. Christina, this is you. This is your first thing today. I'm sorry, I said number, let me add this number four, sorry.
So just wanted to give you a brief update on where we are. I've actually got some stuff already prepared for the next agenda. You'll have a resolution to formally accept these funds. Y'all already kind of done it in the in the meeting, but we'll have an actual resolution to accept it. We'll also have a capital ordinance. Project ordinance to create the funding so that we can start spending it down. We're still waiting on the final rule to come out. Uh, we're still working by the premise of the interim final rule. Anything that comes out further will only expand upon what's in the interim rule. And so far, I've really assessed what's in that interim rule to figure out a couple of ways we can spend the funding. Um, as you know, we have a lot of it coming in with very little parameters as to where we're allowed to spend it. It's got to be tied to COVID and the response to the recovery. So we've got a total of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that's been sitting in our bank account for a couple of months now. And we're ready to start spending on things that we can start the recovery process. Um, the total revenue we expect to receive is one million seventy-six thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirty-three. The loss of revenue that we've calculated out, and it's based off of a formula that's within their interim final rule. I emailed all this stuff to you guys yesterday. I know that you haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but in the next couple of weeks, you're more than welcome to look at it. It'll be on your next agenda, so it'll be all there as well. It's a lengthy document, but um if anybody's had a chance to review it and has other opportunities that you want to explore for us in the interim, please let me know. We will come, we will, so we'll claim about eighty, eight hundred dollars, nine thousand dollars from loss of revenue. This is strictly related to utilities. Um, believe it or not, our barn rentals, picnic shelters, community gardens, and all that stuff is picked up. ABC surprisingly had a loss of three hundred dollars, so we'll claim that as well.
They had a loss?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Surprisingly. So that money will go back into the general fund once we process all of that. And technology for Village Hall, I will provide a very lengthy explanation of all this at the next meeting, or it'll either be in your consent agenda if you guys are okay with this, um, with a memo that I'd started yesterday, and you guys got that yesterday. But basically, the technology for Village Hall, as you know, that we're sitting in these closed quarters right now, it's really hard for residents to come in for social distancing purposes. So we are required to kind of add some technology features into the new Village Hall to accommodate for COVID purposes and to maintain that social distancing. I'm estimating that to be around sixty thousand dollars. Those are from quotes that we've already received. I did RFP this about two weeks ago, and we will get RFPs back on Monday. So I'll have some better answers before the meeting, um, and we'll be ready to award that contract at the next meeting.
And that's good because they probably need that as they're doing, starting the wiring and stuff.
Yeah, we handled that yesterday.
Access control. This is basically so that staff employees, anyone that attends, can have keyless entry so that they can avoid those contaminated areas, um, to prevent the spread of COVID. And that would suffice for any visitors that come and rent some of our facilities, so it is for residents as well. Uh, they'll have key card access if they're renting the facilities, and they won't have to actually touch any keys or anything like that.
That's in the war.
That'd be like on an app?
Yes, it it will be on an app or a keyless card, either way.
Oh, yeah, but keyless card, you're still touching a card.
We can, we can do an app, and more than likely, the app will be for staff only, and then we'll do the cards for the residents.
And the cards are still gonna be touched. We can say after.
They they have a limited, well, according to the vendors I've spoken to, they charge per like usage of the access. So we'll just have to wait, see when the RFPs come in.
All right, that's fine.
Either way, it prevents touching keys, so. Social distancing is required in the new Village Hall, so as you all know, we initially planned to have our cancel chambers kind of similar to what we have now, where we're sitting close together, and we've since had to expand that area to a larger desk to separate us for other, for social distancing purposes. So that was estimated around seventeen thousand dollars. In addition to that, we all obviously share offices here. That's what we intended to do at the next Village Hall for some of us. But we have since had to expand on getting some more offices, desk chairs, and that sort of thing. So that we do not share offices to prevent the spread of COVID, social distancing.
Like a hunter, bud.
That's estimated around thirty-five thousand dollars. That will basically be put back into the general, I'm sorry, the capital project fund for Village Hall. So we've already earmarked, I think it was around a hundred thousand dollars for furniture. What we ended up doing is crediting the Village Hall Capital Project back at thirty-four thousand dollars.
Awesome.
Financial software, this is really needed in terms of allowing us staff to have more remote and virtual possibilities. Jamie's here to answer any questions that you may have, but basically, long story short, all of our processes now involve physical staff to come in to check for pre-audits, that sort of thing, um, to process checks, to receive funding. With the new financial software, we're able to do pre-audits from afar, so we have more capacity to work virtually for all staff. In addition to that, we do encourage people right now to come in for renting facilities, uh, paying permit fees, that sort of thing. So this financial software will also allow citizens to actually stay at home, rent barn facilities, and they don't actually physically have to come in, so it avoids contact. That's estimated around fifty thousand dollars. Is that correct? Fifty, okay.
You want an example? Like right now, we physically have to print a receipt. We have to stamp it. I have to check in our book, enter it by hand.
And so this will, this will prevent, this will take out a bunch of steps.
Yes, and electronically, and then, um, department heads will be able to see their dashboard, like Derek at the park, or if he has to run and get gas, he'll be able to see his dashboard of how much he has available for gas at that moment. Um, and then I can virtually give him the approval that he can.
Instead of having to do it in person?
Yes.
So it's all about virtual, creating a virtual atmosphere?
Save a tremendous amount of staff time.
Yes.
And improve efficiency on top of the fact that you can do.
It's gonna be more safe.
Safer, less contact.
That's right.
Contact.
This replaces QuickBooks.
Yes.
Yes, so we'll be taking away the QuickBooks and adding the software.
So I don't know, people have heard, there's some, there's several different advertisements that are out there saying, if you're on QuickBooks, that's like ancient stuff now.
It is.
And, you know, it's no over quick, it's no over.
It's not quick. No, it is very slow.
Okay, again, that's around fifty thousand dollars. Hazard premium pay, this is again for staff that worked during the COVID response. We're still in the national declaration, the statewide declaration, so we're still in this period. That's estimated around sixty thousand dollars. We can decide how we want to do that later. What I've got estimated right now is basically looking at total staff hours that have worked during the declaration times a multiplier, whatever we want to dub that at. Right now, I've got it at five dollars an hour. We can lower it, we can raise it, whatever y'all want to do. That's estimated around sixty thousand dollars. Another option to this is also doing a per month stipend, and we can post date, look at that too. So we'll look at different options, but I've got that in here right now at sixty thousand dollars. Uh, community vaccine incentives, it was something that was discussed. It's a possibility if you guys want to do it. Not a big deal if you don't. Um, back to work incentives, this is for employees to assist in childcare or incentivize people to come back to work after the pandemic. We can keep that on or take it off. This would be a monthly stipend going forward until the declaration is over. I've got that in here at thirty thousand dollars. Again, once we decide how we're gonna do the hazard premium pay, we can discuss all that as well. Newtown water infrastructure, this is basically running the water and sewer line from Marvin School Road up to Marvin Road. So that's estimated around four thousand.
Four thousand dollars?
Four hundred thousand, sorry.
Oh, okay. Sounds like, damn, that's cheap.
I've paid for that myself.
This water line is sponsored by JBL.
And I'm in, I did just reach out to the county yesterday and then to get a follow up on that, um, to have a greater conversation, so.
That four hundred thousand number was based off of some estimates that I found in all of our assessments for the Marvin Heritage District and what they had planned for it. None of that has engineered, approved, or anything like that, so it's really just a staff best estimate at the time.
Okay.
It could be less, it could be more, no clue. It's sixteen hundred linear feet, though. I did discover that.
Some of the sewers would depend on what capacity the county wants to put into, what type, how how big the line.
The water and sewer development fees that we had to pay for the Village Hall project down here. was around $30,000, and what we'll do is credit that back, because water and sewer infrastructure isn't allowable use. That was being paid out of the Village Hall Capital Project Fund. So what we'll do with that one is reimburse it back as well. So that right there is a total of $60,000 that we've already committed that we're going to pay back to general fund, uh, just the capital project fund.
That'll kind of cover some of the contingencies.
Yes, yes. The next project that we've already committed money to for the Village Hall is the water and sewer TAP for the actual building. That was estimated around $80,000 based off of the RFP that we received and the contract that we're currently under. However, they do have an allowable expenditure for unsuitables. And as you know, we did discover that with the main site, so I did include a couple thousand dollars in more for that. So I've got that estimated at $85,000.
I'd do more than five?
I've got seven. Or eight, I'm sorry, I've got eight. We can always amend it to. Remote staff equipment, getting, you know, computers. There's only, I think, two or three of us that have laptops right now, so we were going to look at getting some more laptops for our staff. That's estimated around $10,000.
Hey, there's just so many expensive laptops. A lot of laptops are like $200 now. Just kidding, that's fine, I'm kidding.
Hunter has to get dock and stations and all this fancy stuff.
I mean, honestly, to see the screens is.
They're anywhere from $25.
We're using our own laptops right now, so.
Agenda management, software and devices. Is there a question from the audience?
Yes, I just thought of curiosity, with all these numbers floating around and regarding this particular piece funds, have you looked, Christina, how it would affect our loan and how much we were able to apply to these funds versus what our loan estimate is, that kind of stuff? Or is that a correct question for Jamie?
What loan are you referring to? This has nothing to do with the Village Hall loan?
Oh, no, I know, but a lot of these things you're talking about have, are costs that, for the Village Hall, are they not?
There's about $150,000 that we will end up reimbursing ourselves. But keep in mind, when y'all initially decided you were going to do a Village Hall several years before I came, y'all put $1 million into a capital project fund. So when we went out to do the bids for the loan, the bank loan, we included the leftover funds that were in there. So we were basically paying for all the ancillary things out of that capital project fund that we had existing. And the loan that we took out was basically, in a nutshell, just to pay for the cost of construction.
So like the sewer line, for instance, because that was broken out of the contract of Village Hall, it was contracted separately, we paid for that separately. So that reimbursement would come back to the village directly.
Okay.
So.
So, and I'm just going to use raw numbers here, but let's say we had a capital project ordinance of $2 million. It was slightly less than that, but I'm just going to use that for numbers sake. Y'all had approximately $500,000 left in the capital, in your savings account that was earmarked for Village Hall. So we turned around, and we knew the project was going to be $2 million. We had $500 already saved up, we needed to match the rest of that with a loan. So we got the 1.5 million to take over the excess. What he's, what Councilman Wartman's referring to is a $80,000 project for water and sewer that we paid for out of that $500,000. So that $80,000 will be reimbursed back to that savings account. Doesn't affect the loan amount or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. Remote staff equipment, agenda management, software and devices. So currently, right now, our agenda management process is you guys physically have binders, a lot of contamination points for COVID. The staff process.
Clips, she's okay. If she doesn't have her supply clipped, she's, no, no go.
The staff process is pretty much non-virtual, so this is an opportunity for us to increase our virtual presence for not only staff, but for elected officials and residents as well. And I'll just let you kind of give a couple seconds blur if you want to.
It's also a good chance for us to reduce our paper usage. We used 52,000 sheets in 2020. But yeah, it's a great chance for us to reduce the number of contact points, how we currently hand off agenda items to each other, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
In our process, we have to submit them to you in the office.
Yes.
To fill the packets.
This way you can do it from home.
Yeah, especially, you know, we go to a point where we have to be at home, then we can do this without coming in. Because right now, we have to physically be here.
Sounds good, sounds good.
I do want you, if you're planning on talking about the devices, I want you to kind of talk to them about the Apple products versus PC.
Well, the software is only, only works Apple products. So that's, and that's an industry standard.
Relerne everything.
That's an industry standard.
It's really, it won't be hard.
It's intuitive, you'll have.
At least I'm all for it.
You're, you all will have training, we all will have training for this, it's brought in.
As long as there's food, I'm good.
There's always, there will always be food.
Hunter made a good point yesterday, because we were talking about the conversion. But iPads are basically like your iPhones, so it's going to very much model.
I don't have an iPhone. I don't use Apple products, Apple all whatsoever, so.
Well, you'll have a pencil that you'll be able to write up on the agenda, it will be very.
Really?
So it'll be just like paper? It'll be just like paper, but it's your own, and it will be there, you can write notes, we can see them, share.
And I am your tech support.
We have tech support on staff.
I know, some of those are kind of mean, though.
I'm still trying.
They're lovable.
But it would be great if you have that all in one place and can pull it up, just.
Listen, if I could write down on it, I'm good.
Yes.
But I physically need to be able to write like notes on.
You will.
Sorry, no, that will be limited.
We'll have to have a technology, updated technology policy.
What?
Updated technology policy for elected officials.
Yeah, seriously.
So the main point of this, the main point of this, no, we don't. Is to reduce those contact points and to create atmospheres that are more virtual in case we go back into the situation we were in previously with this new Delta variant. It will have some ancillary benefits, like he had said, mentioned, reducing environmental concerns, also reducing, you know, mileage that we have for delivering agenda packets, that sort of thing.
Labor and time as well.
Absolutely. So would that.
I'd like someone to my house, though.
He does.
I do, your dogs are adorable. We can still have tea or something.
Okay, good.
So this will be, he's actually done a couple of demos to look at the effectiveness of the programs, and he's ready to award a contract in October. So you'll see this again on the agenda in October, and we're ready to pull the trigger on that one.
All right, sounds good.
Does anybody object to Apple products?
Nope. I promise.
I just, I got a good tech support, I'm good, whatever. I guess we can't object to it, because this is the only way it can be done.
There's some other Village Hall changes that can possibly come up that, one of them that came up last week was touchless dryers. So I put in.
Soap dispensers?
Soap dispensers. I put in estimated $10,000 for future things that may come up that we add in to help prevent those contamination points. Don't know what those are yet, but I just earmarked $10,000 for it. So all of that said and done.
Wasn't there something that I made a suggestion, you're like, ooh, tell me tomorrow?
Tourism signs.
Oh, yeah, okay, so tourism signs.
Before you go farther than the touchless stuff in the restaurants and stuff, do we have motion sensing light switches and such?
That's a good question.
That's a great idea, I have one in my laundry room, and I love it.
I have one in my bathroom, because my kids don't know how to turn a switch off.
On's okay, you gotta get off. That's an easy light switch.
It goes on automatically, and then it goes off after a timer.
But he's six foot four.
Yeah.
He's not.
Are we doing him?
Yeah, so it turns it off. So, but that's, it's power saving, and it's also touchless, so those are some good things.
I wrote it down, I don't know the answer to that, I think that we do, just, I think that's how.
I mean, that's how the commission, putting switches in, that's nothing, we have a deal with tomorrow, but that's something to think about.
That is smart, that's a great idea.
Okay, we'll add it if not. Other than that, tourism signs.
Tourism signs, so tourism is a big one that they say that you can use this money for. So I say, let's get some wayfinding signs. Where's the park? Where's Village Hall? Where's the downtown Heritage District? Where's Publix? And then this way, we could, we can, the park sign that we just did, that's tourism, where we're making money, and so we can have, get reimbursed for that. My new Marvin sign that's on the.
Yeah, the one that you've been barking about for the last six months. You can get that done.
We can get that, no, it's done, we can get reimbursed for that. But every place that needs a Marvin sign, and then have like a sign for Village Hall, and I think.
Can we do Marvin Day signs?
Yeah.
And I'm saying that because when Marvin Day comes, you know how they have signs, you hang from light poles that says, it's kind of got this date?
Oh, yeah, we can do those signs, see?
Yeah.
Do you guys like that?
For tourism?
Terrorism?
Joe likes, I think that'll work.
Joe likes it, yeah, he does. Bob likes it too.
How much do you think I should earmark for that?
So, a lot, because signs are expensive for some.
Thinking about this, so while we're talking about this, sometime in the next hundred years, we're going to have light poles in our traffic circles, do we want to do any kind of seasonal decoration banners like Waxahaw does, and like Matthews does and all that stuff? Will that work under that? Like, can we put banners?
Seasonal banners for like, you know how like Waxahaw has like, well, happy holidays Waxahaw.
Oh, okay, like whole banners, whole banners?
Whole banners. Christmas decorations. We're supposed to be getting light poles in our traffic circles at some place, sometime before I die. But, you know, both traffic circles will eventually have light poles, so we'll have those kinds of, or three, whatever, both ends. We'll eventually have light poles, so we'll have an opportunity to put it on either end of downtown.
The Heritage District.
The Heritage District, right?
The Heritage District, welcome spring!
I'll read the rule, I have not read the rule much about the tourism stuff, because we didn't have a whole lot that applies, but you're bringing up some good points, so I'll read it more in depth.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Thanks for remembering what I forgot.
Maybe sometime if they ever do the one at Monst Grove, that could be a third leg.
Yeah.
You know, so we kind of pull the whole village together.
I bet we can put some, I bet we can put some up at Publix, because I'm sure there's some light pieces at Publix we could add there.
So yeah, so, I mean, because that'll also give some connectivity to the village where people will realize that they're in Marvin.
I like it.
As they traverse through.
Okay.
I like it.
Other change, or not changes, but so.
No, I was just thinking of, you're now leaving Marvin, and it'll be, it'll be like a thousand of those signs.
Because then it's going to be like, oh, you're back in, oh, no, wait, you're gone again, oh, no, wait, you're back in.
Welcome back, we're missing.
Welcome, Marvin. Danner out. Damn, I just thought I said welcome.
Thanks for visiting.
Playground, Jamie's trying to talk to me about playground equipment, not, honestly, like, I don't understand why playground equipment hasn't been added for this use. But they specifically talk about in the interim rule that you can do recreational type stuff, but it's for lower income communities, and I just don't think we would fall under that.
Just having to be sure we're following the guidelines, but they might add to it.
I would, I would, I would put a little, if they, yeah, an earmark for, because that's, I mean, we could definitely upgrade it.
Don't forget.
Yeah, because it would be great to have for the kids.
Toddler, bigger, yeah, I agree, totally.
We're getting ready to have to replace that whole unit, and that's going to be very costly. So if there is, some of that could go towards that, it's going to be huge.
That'd be awesome.
That's good that.
Virtual playground set.
Virtual, you can fly, let's swing.
So of those things, I just added in $75,000 for tourism signs, and we still have a total of 160 left. Some of the other opportunities that I've noted, our small business grants, household assistance for residents, food utilities, rent, mortgage, we'd have to find a way to administer that and set the parameters on it. But those are a couple of different ways that we could spend this, the rest of this money, or reallocate everything that I've just mentioned.
I like it for sure.
That's the first $500, or is that?
This is the million.
It's the whole million?
We've already received the first, and then the other half will come. It's definitely a good start.
Does any other council members have any thoughts, suggestions about using this other 150, or you just want me kind of put that and then set it aside for another call?
Bob and I have an idea.
If they can beat one too.
As long as there's food involved.
Yeah, I'd say, let's set it aside, and as they continue, give us more.
Would you like to give a small business grant?
We can put, I mean, that, I'll keep, I have all of this in a spreadsheet, so what I'll do is keep this laid out with the other opportunities. If y'all want to come back to that at a later date, we can talk about it. Did anybody have any hesitancy towards the dollar amounts that I just gave you for each category?
Nope.
Now, as far as the remainder, I think sitting on it for right now might be a good idea, because some of these numbers may change in the future as things develop. So if we have a little cushion on that, I think it would be wise, in case we add some to some of these categories.
So what I'll do at the next meeting then is I'll create the capital project ordinance with all the numbers, the not-to-exceed numbers that I just mentioned here for those subcategories. I do want to reiterate that we feel comfortable with these expenditures as we've justified, and as I will justify to a memo to you guys. But there is the slight chance that the way that we're interpreting a response for COVID, they may not interpret it the same way. So I just want to be cognizant that we're looking at these projects, and you guys are of the same opinion, that you believe that it's COVID response, because there could be the potential where we have to pay something back if they don't dub it as COVID response for the interim rule. So I'll provide that.
That leads me to what I was going to just comment on, you know, making sure we're, when we are receiving these funds, that we're not unnecessarily on the hook for anything, or there's not any hidden agendas within the bill that says, if we take any of this money, then we're on the hook for this or that, or whatever. I don't know, I just know how they work.
Yeah, I can't answer that question, I would assume that the answer is no, but if in the event they see something that we spent as non allowable, they would make us pay it back. For example. Oh, it's not, okay.
He's saying it's.
Stipulations in the bill.
No, I don't think so.
Like, you have to allow apartments.
Oh, no, no.
Or you have to, I mean, stuff like that.
For giving it and letting us do what's best for our community.
That's what he's concerned about, is that there are hidden agendas, and we're going to get stuck having to cut up apartment buildings.
Yeah, and we have to provide X amount of housing for whatever, I mean, because we receive these funds. We just got to be clear that, you know, it doesn't affect our ordinances and our, what, we are, that type of thing, so.
I have not read the entire bill, so I can't answer that question truthfully, but I would seriously doubt it. You'd have other municipalities with pitchforks.
Greenberg Housing.
Yeah, we could do have, we could have silver houses for the housing.
So again, we'll put this in the project ordinance at the next meeting, and once it's in there, it's pretty much given us to go ahead to start spending these funds. So just so y'all are aware of that, for example, financial software, if we put it in there at $50,000, we're allowed to pull the trigger on that financial software expenditure, so just so y'all know.
If you're putting together ordinance and the numbers change, we can always update that ordinance, correct?
Yes, yeah.
That's fine, I'm good with that.
But once the ordinance is created, it's kind of hard to go back and take it away, because we could have already pulled the trigger on it, financial software, agenda software, that sort of thing.
Right, that's fine.
And I do want to note that there is another discussion that's been going on that would actually add to this. Councilman Wartman and Mayor Plino are on the Woma Board, and there's been discussions about an infrastructure program that's being talked about at the state level, if you want to mention that, because it could potentially take this $400,000 that we've earmarked for water and sewer and cut that down, so we would thus have more money.
So in our last meeting, David Willis mentioned that we want, it would be prudent probably if we were paying attention to the new infrastructure, infrastructure bill as it's presented, because some of the monies that are coming down with that could potentially, we may potentially want to shift how we spend the RFP funds, because it may cross over. So he was, he mentioned that this was getting ready to come down, and he was interested to see what that would look like, what we could, what the parameters are of those funds versus the RFP funds. So you recall, Joe, him making that comment?
Sorry, yes, no, I, I agree, yeah, so we just got to be aware of that, what's going to be happening with that. So we're still trying to get a good idea of what other communities are going to do with, if at all, with those funds.
But David should be, David should be able to, because the infrastructure bill, the federal infrastructure bill is going to come out federally. because the infrastructure bill, the federal infrastructure bill is going to come out federally and the information is going to be, so do we, can we reach out to, um, our local congressman to see what's in it? That they may already see that crosses over, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, he, he didn't know at our last meeting, so that's why he's.
We can reach out to Dan Bishop and go.
Hey.
Hey, what's going on? Because we have this pot over here and if we spend this pot, then you go, oh, no, no, we had money for that, that was in the infrastructure bill, like.
Well, that's why, like, like this, uh, some of this stuff, uh, when we're talking about infrastructure, about sewer and water and stuff like that. So, uh, some of those bigger ticket items, they're allowed under ARP, but they may be allowed under infrastructure as well, so we may decide we want to shift some funds in ARP to different things as this comes out. We're not going to pull the trigger on the sewer line tomorrow, so we got a little time.
I, I know, but I think it'd be, to that point, I think it'd be a great opportunity because you're now a larger group than just Marvin and Radiken to reach out to the local congressman that covers this and say, we'd like to invite you to our Woma meeting. By the way, we want you to talk as, as much as you can to what you see as already in the infrastructure bill. And get ahead of it.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, if they can, if they're willing to do so, then certainly we're willing to, to have them at our Woma meeting. Everybody's on their seat trying to figure out what's coming out.
Right.
We all like to know, because we all have the same interest. We got to figure out what to do with these funds and what, what they're going to allow with this other bill.
So we're, I mean, again, I'll, I'll put all this stuff in the project ordinance at the next meeting and that's y'all's final blessing to kind of go ahead with what we've earmarked. So if y'all see any other plan. Yeah, I'll put it on the consent, but if y'all see any other opportunities that are in the interim rule, I've already sent it to you again, but I'll put it in the agenda packets again. You can go ahead and start reading it. It's a fun document to read. But you will see opportunities in there. If anything, you know, raises a hand, make sure you earmark it and we'll pull it off.
Anybody have any questions for Christina? Nope, nope, we're going to move on?
Yep.
Yep, yep, okay.
I'm all right.
Next up, number five, discussion of future road assessment requests. This too is Christina.
So we've had a lot of people actually, uh, talking about this over the last couple of months, probably more so the last year. Basically, what this is, is something that the village has never done. We've been in the roads business for probably, I don't know, five years now, and we're starting to take on more roads, getting more power bill funding, that sort of thing. We're streamlining our process, making it a lot more efficient, but what we've seen, and this is not just with Marvin residents, but people that are wishing to annex in, so it's a good annexation possibility as well. People that do not have their roads currently paved, or either they are paved and they're in disarray and they're needing improvements, are looking at coming into the village for that purpose of us starting to maintain their roads. Our current policies do not allow us to take and accept roads if they're not to a great standard. Uh, and that's obviously for the benefit of all taxpayers, because if we accept a road that's failing, then we're going to have to divide all the taxpayer monies to fix that one road, thereby benefiting a private road essentially. So one of the statutory possibilities is for us to come in and do a special assessment on these roads. And basically, what that would mean in a nutshell is Robin Wood, for example, is, is one that is looking at potentially doing this. They don't have paved roads now. They want paved roads. Uh, they have their roads and their private subdivision is maintained by them. And let's just use raw numbers here. Let's say it costs a hundred thousand dollars to pave that entire subdivision. I don't know how much it's going to cost, I haven't measured it. But let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars and there's ten families in the ten homes within that area. We would basically take that hundred thousand dollars, measure out the linear foot of each of the ten homes, charge them back what that ten, a hundred thousand dollars would be. It's going to be different for every resident, because every resident has different linear footage, so it's, you know, it could be ten thousand for one, it could be two thousand for another, it's not the same. But over the course of whatever timeline that you guys designate, whether it's two years, whether it's ten years, they can have that payment sent back to the village via, on their tax assessment. So it's not an increase in taxes for that area, it's just a special assessment that would be charged and collected as their normal tax bill would be.
So they don't have to upfront the money?
They don't have to upfront the money. Now, the downside to that is we have to upfront the money.
Right.
So we would have to come out of pocket for that hundred thousand dollars and we would recoup that over the course of whatever number of years you guys decide it would be.
Well, and then, you know, and those funds may be available with the infrastructure bill. We don't know how that's going to happen, but more than likely, infrastructure bill is going to cover roads, bridges and water and sewer, so there may be the opportunity to have some fluctuation there to be able to, to make this work.
Well, worst case scenario, what we, what we would do is pull it out of fund balance, pay for it, um, or we could actually go out and get a loan. Now, we'd have to do the loan for less than five years, because the LGC has to prove anything greater than five years and it would be a little bit of a nightmare to have to go through that process every time we had one of these requests. But we could essentially do that and whatever interest rate we were charged, if, if any, we could charge that back to them.
I mean, I like, I like that idea, but I hate the idea of tapping into our fund balance to do it. If we can, if we can either take out a short-term loan or get like a chunk of it from the residents upfront, then I'm, I'm more leaning towards that, but I don't like, I don't like tapping into fund balance, like, for like a hundred grand when it's just for one neighborhood instead of the entire community.
Okay.
I'm with you on that. I think that you're, you're on the right track, because they don't want to cripple us
Yeah.
um, for just this one project, but like you said, either a short-term loan or maybe we have stuff in this infrastructure bill that we can set aside a fund for tapping into for that particular purpose and then replacing it as they pay the balance back, something of that nature.
And, and if, you know, the infrastructure bill comes through and we're getting money for that, then that's, that's a, that's a different conversation. But if it's just our, like, fund balance, I don't, I don't like just.
Correct.
So bending that down, I don't.
We'll look at it at a staff level and start looking at loans under five years and see what kind of interest rates we can have. I did get some estimates.
Go ahead, Joe.
My concern would be, um, how do you prioritize, uh, certain neighborhoods over others? And do we, if this is one big project and I, from an umbrella standpoint, what do we determine is always going to be Marvin or potential Marvin and nothing else? And then look at that as a big picture, or are we going to prioritize based on who comes to us, based on what their roads are? I mean, it gets a little, um.
So the statutory definition is that there has to be a petition and the majority of the residents have to sign said petition. So it would just be like the same as annexation. You'd have to have the majority of people in that area, I say people, but linear footage ownership is the right answer, not people. Uh, the majority of linear footage ownership to approve that petition before we can move forward with it. So it would be done on a request basis, just based off of the statutory allowance.
And I guess it gets, I guess it gets a little sticky when you're talking about, you know, upfronting, fronting the money and then getting it back in the sense of taxes. So what happens if, um, the roads get paid? That improves it a lot for the homeowner, um, and the homeowner ends up selling and literal of all this and moves on. Is that funds now go to, or is that part of their, uh, you know, when they settle up with the hut statement and saying, okay, you owe this?
No, it's a, no, it's an assessment that would stay with the property. I mean, it's just like.
So you would assume it if you bought the property, you'd assume that, that debt until it's paid, because it would be.
Right.
Because I guess we would, in order to do this, we would have to put a lien on the property for this. So if you sell the lien.
Basically.
Just like if you had a lien on your house from a court settlement or whatever, it's still a lien on the property, so then that would transfer forward. Either it would be paid off with the sale of the house at the sale to, to take care of the lien, or it would pass on to the new buyer, however they worked it out. But we would get our money back either way, because we have a lien on the property.
It, it's not, and I don't want to confuse anybody, it's not considered a lien, but the premise is the same thing.
Right.
Okay. So I'll, I'll look at some loans and we'll, we'll further assess that. I did get some estimates back from our engineer, because I wanted to kind of see what kind of numbers we were working with.
Can I ask a question before you do that? Do we have anybody that has like done a petition that is like, we want our roads done, like we're ready to move forward?
We actually had Providence Estates in, I mean, we literally had probably five meetings with them. They were ready to sign the paperwork, but we actually ended up getting them to do their roads themselves for whatever reason, instead of doing this. So they're getting ready to petition us to take over their roads, but.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, okay, but nobody wants us to pay them and do this whole situation right now?
Robin Wood, I believe, is at that point.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they haven't done a petition yet? They haven't submitted anything?
Robin Wood is just one small road, right? It's not like a bunch?
It's one, one, one long road and I think it.
Yeah, it ends in a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not a huge project, it's fairly small.
We had Thera Farms that wanted to do it, but they didn't want to get rid of their gates, so. But I, I think Robin Wood's ready to actually to.
But if they're paying for it, why do they have to get rid of their gates?
They, they can't have public streets with gates.
Yeah, if we own the streets, then it's, then they're public.
Oh, and they want us to take, take them over, okay.
Um, I told Robin Wood to just wait, let me make sure y'all are receptive to the idea, because I didn't want them to say y'all were willing to front the money upfront and then do it. So they, they haven't submitted the petition yet, because they want to make sure y'all are okay with it.
Okay.
So I think they're going to, they're going to do that soon.
Cool.
Yeah, I'd really like to let that before we start offering to put the money upfront.
So if they do decide to do this, then what I'm, I think what we're saying is then we would be looking at doing a short-term loan for the,
Yeah.
for the outset and then going that route.
And is this for them?
This is, no, it's just base, like baseline, so like per one-tenth mile with a twenty-foot road without curb is around sixty thousand dollars.
How, how long?
Per one-tenth mile, I don't know, I haven't measured it yet.
All right.
But if you're, if you're doing curb and gutter, it doubles that, so.
All right. I would just do some more research and find out what it's going to take to get a loan.
Okay, I'll, I'll get that back to you guys.
Is that good with you guys, Joe, Bob?
Love it with the doing a loan for it?
Andy, Jamie. All right, uh, okay, next up is discussion of removing underbrush at the Village Hall project site. Mr. Warpman, that's you.
That's me, huh?
That is.
Um, well, I mean, we, we talked about this a good while ago. And basically having, um, brush removed does not affect our disturbed area. So, um, it's probably a good idea to go ahead and start looking at that as the fall comes in, because then the weeds and stuff start to lose their leaves and it's a lot easier to see and do what we need to do. What we do need to do is come up with a plan on what, what we want removed, what we don't want removed, and how we want it to look, so that we can move forward with planning on it, so.
Okay. I mean, I, like, I wouldn't be able to see Village Hall from Newtown right now, I can't see it right now.
I agree. Um, you can't, I mean, the only spot you can see through is where the sign is, basically, from the traffic circle on Newtown, at any, at any point. And I would like, I'd really like to be able to see it from Waxon Harbor Traffic Circle looking
Yeah.
that way. Um, there's a lot of underbrush. Um, obviously, we want to keep all the big, many trees and all that stuff, but I think that.
Do we need to get three quotes for this?
Yes, but y'all can waive it. I mean, the way that we're, we're revising the procurement policy, technically, yes, but not legally.
So I would say let's, I mean, maybe talk to our landscape company?
That's changed dramatically, but.
Oh, did it change?
Biscay over brush removal.
Okay.
Um, Derek knows him. I've met him, he's done some work for my neighbor, does a good job. He's really clean, really good job.
Andy's got a guy.
Andy's always got a guy. I like having a guy.
But there's also, I mean, any, any reputable landscape company can go in and do that, but there's like the brush hog guy, the, the, you know, the grinder or whatever.
Yeah.
We've, we've contracted with other ones in the past too to do, uh, trail clearing and stuff, so there's, there's options out there. It just depends on how, how surgical we want to do it.
Well, you want it very surgical.
Right, and then, and we need to.
So you go meet with them and tell them what you want, because I don't know what's a weed and what's a plant, so.
Well, so what I can do is I can get with Derek, we can go out there, we can walk it.
Derek?
Don't, she disappear on me. We can walk it and get an idea of what we want to remove and what we don't. And then we can determine who we want to do to do the brush clearing around Village Hall and then along Newtown and that.
To Kim's point, I, I think we need to have some sort of, I know that we have a tree arborist, don't we, that we sometimes contact and make sure that what, what, what we want to keep, what, what's going to.
That's a good point, Joe, is, is identify the tree's health and all that, so if there are trees there that are in bad shape that we want, you know, that are not healthy, that do need to come down for safety reasons and such, we may want to do that at that point. But yeah, good point.
Man, just to be clear, we're not touching the berm, right? We're just clearing out, we can't.
We're not grading, we're just clearing underbrush and, and any trees that are not healthy that would, would want to be for practical purposes. I mean, if that, if it's, if it's dying, it's going to be a fall on the road kind of thing or whatever, we want to address that.
Dying or dead, it's out.
Yeah, but.
Just, just for what it's worth, I, you, you look at my property, I just had it done. I just had my property and I know, I know a guy too.
Perfect.
About time.
If somebody to drone to offer for a bid, um, you can look at my property and see what was done, so.
Looks great.
The good seeds got rid of the brush, um, and I, you know, it, I, it's pretty impressive how they're surgically able to go through there and take down stuff and, so anyway, so I've got somebody.
So you and you will get with an arborist and Bob's going to give you the name of a guy.
Are you guys, if, if Derek and I go out there and put some ribbon out
Yeah.
to the areas that we're thinking about working and then you guys can get a visual on it, does that sound like a good plan? That gives you guys something to look at, so you have an idea of what we're, what we're actually proposing to get cleaned up.
I don't care.
I mean, because a ribbon is going to help the, well, and a ribbon's going to be able to help the contractor stay within a parameter too. So if we, we put some ribbon up and we approve that, then we'll.
And I do like the idea of doing it like, coming into like, you know, one discuss, be easier to clear up.
Because we are going to be looking at doing the, um, the farmer's market in a couple of years when we're allowed to disturb ground again, so.
How long do we have to wait for that?
Three years. Three years.
Thank you.
But we, uh, you know, we're going to have that area, so, you know, getting some of that brush contained and down and stuff like that in that area and then just the trees, so when we do go to do this, if there are some trees and grading that needs to be done, at least it'll be cleared enough to where.
I just want to be able to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will say that I, for whatever reason, and, um, I did not expect the town hall to be that low and we're just seeing the, the top of it and we're keeping that berm. I thought, based on the pictures I saw, that that was going to be more, more level, be able to see it, so I agree with you, Kim, being able to see that. Andy, I'd be happy to go out with you with Derek, when you guys are ready to go out.
To your point, Joe, I expected the, the elevation to be a little higher too. I thought we were going to have a little bit higher porch on the parking lot side than we are going to have. It seems, it seems to sit lower than I thought too, so.
All right, so Joe and Andy are going to get with the arborist and Derek and Bush hogger and Bob's going to get the Bush hogger name and we're going to move forward. You got this on your action item list, because it's going to be a big one.
Oh, Lord, huh, huh, huh.
All right, just having attention.
There should be candy.
Candy, all right.
All right, all right, give it to me.
No, I know you should have been listening, if I can listen to it. Um. All right, next up is discussion of Fall Town Hall meeting agenda and format. I'm just kidding, Austin, it's.
I got it.
Christina's got it. Okay, this is, oh, this is us. Has everybody looked at this? Are we good with this agenda and who's talking about what?
Well, I'm good with the agenda.
Called order, Joe, adoption, Joe, welcome, Joe. Accomplishments, that'll be Christina. Christina will be Village Hall update. Austin is artifact and time capsule. Christina will be, uh, waste service. Christina will be roundabout. Derek will be greenway trails. Derek will be disc golf. Derek will be national night out. Jamie Lyon is going to be Marvin Day. Heritage District, we're going to put you, Hunter, on that. Um, Coffee with Council, we're going to put Jamie Lyon on that.
Absolutely.
And then, uh, general questions will be all, and then obviously all meet and greet.
Now, just a reminder, from what you got, the feedback you gave us previously, this first segment is supposed to be pretty condensed and then it's mainly the meet and greet.
Perfect, that's great.
What, what about Derek?
Nothing.
I'm gonna hear all this later.
Alright, let's focus, let's focus later. Alright, everybody good on that, Hunter? You got yours?
I'm in love.
Okay. So what time do we need to be there? We're not doing anything with electronics, so we don't need to do anything. I said we all need to be there at six?
Yes.
Is there anything you want to add?
Is there, is there, is there a way to promote this? Uh, just something different than we did last time, or more? I mean, I know we're gonna send it out on the, can we put a, can we put a?
Get a banner?
A banner.
Yeah, yeah, let's get a banner.
Can we put, if we're gonna get a banner, can we get another banner to put it down by Eden Park, the people that they go by there?
Yep.
I mean, God, can we get more than six of the same people?
Oh, no.
For, out of 7,000 people, do you think we can get more than six?
I mean, I said let's send it out on the HOA list. Um, Austin, did you send out the National Night Out to the HOA list on Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna email my HOA president and tell her that. If y'all are on Facebook, do you share our Facebook page?
I'm not on Facebook.
Come on, look at every single, none of us are on Facebook.
None of you?
No.
I have Facebook page, but I don't look at it.
I was just like thinking your neighborhood might, or someone could share it on your neighborhood pages.
I don't even know how that works.
Well, the neighbors don't have pages. If you, uh, if you have a banner for National Night Out, I could put it like down a trailer in front of my house in my driveway or something.
There we go, three banners.
Wax on Marvin Road where everybody drives by.
So.
Three banners.
Yeah, or out my yard or whatever. I don't, I don't have an issue with it.
Not nothing.
Town Hall meeting or.
We used to have a banner for that, but we don't get it now.
Good Lord, we gotta get more than that. I mean, come on, if we can't get 50 people.
I agree.
But I, you know, in some regards, it's a, it's a positive, because people feel comfortable with what we're doing.
Yep.
And how we're doing, we cannot communicate anymore than what we do right now.
And we're doing a great job.
I mean, you know this community, if, if we're doing something wrong, they're gonna be out telling us about it loud and clear. So to your point, I think it's good.
I, I do, but I love for some, you know, there, there's some time that someone would come in and go, I have some questions, or I do have some concerns about this, or.
You guys, great job!
Yeah, that would be nice.
Well, I mean, there is, there is a collection coming up, so, I mean, hopefully some people will start to pay attention to that.
That will reflect.
Well, I think we also should just, through our own network of, uh, contacts within the Town of Marvin, just, uh, start talking it up as much as we can. A lot of people may get those, those push indicators from us and sometimes follow them by the side without ever looking at them or paying attention to it, so self-promoting that ourselves too would be helpful and true.
I think it's good.
Are, are we having any kind of, are we having coffee? Can we set up a coffee stand? Can we set up some kind of, I don't know?
Do you guys want a food truck?
If we don't use it, we don't use it. Hell, if we do coffee with council, so can we not set up a couple of large coffee things, or?
Hey, we got curries coming out of our butt.
Sweet tea stand.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm on my sweet tea truck. I mean, yeah, maybe we, maybe we do, maybe we do a food truck.
Yeah, I mean, if someone comes, I mean, it's 6:30, so if someone goes, hey, you know what, let's go to the town hall meeting, we don't have to do supper tonight. I don't know, I'm just trying to get something, something that makes it.
I like it. I mean, maybe we.
Yeah, that, that might be a draw, if you, we put there that food truck will be available, uh, that is a different twist.
But they have to stay. They can't just roll up, grab food and pee salad like that guy.
Go out there and tell them.
Like, did I told the guy?
The brother down there, he, he popped a pop.
I was like, what is that guy doing?
Just set the gate to only allow people in, not out.
Hotel, Hotel California.
Yeah, let's get a food truck and advertise that, Austin, add that in.
We can do.
Advertising.
I'm about to start advertising.
I might have a truck Facebook page.
Christina, if there's a, if there's a, um, minimum on the food truck? Cause there is, I, I'm all for you saying, okay, give them the minimum. Cause we gotta get some people in.
Yeah, I mean, I'm saying like, we'll, we'll pay for the food truck to get people to come.
So, so it's kind of on the village, we're paying for that, right?
Yes, it's fine, yes.
We're paying for the minimum, we're paying for the minimum to get the food truck there. But when they walk up, they're gonna have to pay for the hot pot.
Are residents due to be purchasing there, that they come, they can grab a bite?
Yeah, they paid for it, but we pay, we cover the minimum.
Oh, you want them to pay for it?
We can do a draw, or we can do the first so many.
Because we didn't pay for it.
Let's, let's do that, then, I'm, I'm fine with that, so just something.
I just, I mean, first thirty. Cause at the ribbon cutting, nobody paid for that.
Right, we, we had, we were doing only two of these a year, I mean.
That's what I'm saying, we should pay for it.
And the four people to show up, I'll pay for it.
My first. You buy me dinner?
Yeah, the first five I'll pay for, ten, how about that?
That's me.
Do you want to do a first?
No, I, no, I think we should pay for it.
No, just pay for it.
It's good, it's commu, it's community relations. We're trying to relate to the community.
Put the food truck down there in the parking lot in front of the barn, so we don't have Joe flying in and out.
Yeah, seriously.
The other event we did, we put Mario and Dreddy over there.
Parking area, and we did like a pizza, and then a drink one, and then, and we put them like around in a, like a swimming circle. And it was nice, because it, people came in then, like, they came around.
Yeah, we don't need that many, we need one.
Yeah, we don't want it out by the road where people just swing by, grab food.
Like, front of the bar.
At the event.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Yeah.
So.
Just one.
The promotion comes in banners, we're gonna get three banners, and then we're gonna promote the food truck being down there.
Yep.
Good.
Just so you know, I may have to do a budget amendment, but we'll do it later.
Do they have to show ID to prove they're a Marvin resident?
Yes.
Bring your, bring your tax bill.
Just show your Marvin ID to get a free mail, I mean.
It's a job.
Well, we, we can.
We're kidding, it's fine. Do we, do we want to add anything to the agenda or take anything off? I think it's great. I think it gets.
No, I think it's, that's a good agenda.
Yeah.
Alright, anybody have anything else for this item? Nope, nope.
Sound good.
Nope, okay. Alright, next up, uh, review of council minutes from 8:26, 21 work session and 9:14, 21 regular meeting. I did not have any changes for either one.
Neither do I.
I'm good.
So I, if you guys are good, I'll put these on the consent agenda for the October 12th meeting.
Joe? You good?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright.
That sounds great. Alright, next up is open topics. Mr. Mayor, I believe you have something?
Uh, yeah, give me one second. Um, I had three items, um, just one more of a, and I don't know how we deal with this, but I happen to be driving in our neighborhood, and now that we own the road, I, I noticed a neighbor. And, and again, I don't know what the specifics are, or Hunter, you may know more about this, but as far as tree removal, um, they removed a ton of trees near the golf course, so I think it was their property they cleared out. And then, you know, so I don't know if they need to get permits for that kind of thing, I know it's their property, but I know clearly there were trees that were bigger than 12 inches that were taken out. And then on top of that, what followed by the, the next week was a huge piece of equipment, um, where I started taking pictures, and, um, the guy was wondering what I was doing, I explained to him that, oh, there are roads, he says, what we're doing, ticking them for caution, um.
Wait, what were they doing? Joe, what were they doing?
Basically, it was a huge piece of equipment that was going in on the property to remove the stumps. Uh, and I'm talking like something you would see on a major highway type of equipment. And I took pictures of it, so, so I was just worried about the damage to the road. There were a few little marks, uh, that were made on the road, that, you know, I took a picture of it, and I, I don't know what, how we deal with that going forward, because I'm assuming, based on just the size of that piece of equipment, being on that property, coming off of the road, it was a normal, um, it wasn't rubber tracks, it was, you know, he did lay plywood down, I watched him do that, but still, um, I, I think before these people just do this, that, you know, I don't, I don't know if we have some sort of policy that that, they need to get a permit before they can just run up on the roads, because this guy happened, and I need to do the right things, but there's still may, event some damage to it, um, so just put that in for whatever, for whatever it is, we can discuss about it, or put it on the agenda, and I can fill you or whoever in more about what, I show you the pictures, that kind of thing. So I just wanted to mention that. The other item was, uh, about attending the Chamber of Commerce meeting. I won a, in a raffle. I don't know if you can see this. It's a gift certificate for, um, $150 value for a one-page color of the Tri-W News, so, because I have nothing to advertise, I'm thinking the village might have something, and I can, if you guys are okay with this, it was something, they, they were handing out kind of, uh, gift prizes if your name was drawn and stuff, and my name was drawn for this. It's basically that, so I wanted to.
We can use it for, yeah, use it for Marvin Day, that's awesome.
Yeah, I was gonna say use it for Marvin Day.
Okay, so I'm, that's you, Austin, and you can, uh, let them know that that's what we're using for it, that, there's a card for.
Just email me all the details, Joe, I'll take care of it.
Or bring it in when you come at the end of the meeting.
The last thing I had is, um, is anyone planning to attend the, um, Marvin, uh, premiere at Dow Theater on October 16th?
The what?
The what? What do you have out?
The movie about Marvin is being premiered on October 16th.
Inherit the Land?
Yes.
Oh, at where?
And that was a Saturday night, unfortunately, I am committed to band competitions, and I'm driving a trailer. But I, I did get, receive something, I think in an email, and I can push that out to you, Austin, I don't know if it just came to me or whatever, but it is the premiere, it is at Dow Theater on the 16th, I want to say.
Is that in Monroe? I thought I, I remember something about being in Monroe.
I'm going to that round by.
I believe it is. Monroe, yes, it is, and it's, but it's. I have it starting at 5:00 o'clock, I don't know, I, it may be a little later than that, but, uh, anyways, it is the premiere. I, it'd be nice to have someone that represents Marvin, unfortunately, I had a pre-commitment with my kids.
That whole time, I might be able to.
You know?
The 16th.
But it'd be nice that, uh, a member of council or whoever, uh, attend that, I would think. I actually want to see the movie, I'm kind of bummed I can't. And I'm meant, if I can, work it out, but I think our, my commitment has me right in the middle of, you know, hauling the equipment for the band, so.
Okay.
Those are the three things I just have that we're on the agenda, that I thought it'd be more of an awareness type of stuff, so.
Okay.
I have some, or don't get tired.
Alright, Bob?
Um, if, this was brought to the attention, uh, from my neighbor on the street, and, uh, it rather was interesting to pop out surprise, but, uh, when you exit, uh, Herod Joe Lane, and you're going to turn right, uh, on Marvin Road heading towards Newtown Road.
Yes.
Um, Newtown Road, from Newtown Road, going the opposite direction towards Herod Joe Lane. Uh, the, as we've discussed, the traffic and the speed has gotten virtually, you know, kind of out of control. And if you're turning left out of Herod Joe, and you're looking to make, either make, if you make a right, it's not gonna make a difference in this regard, but if you're making a left in front of the Innisbrook entrance uh, from Herod Joe, the velocity of the cars that are going so fast, you've really got to step on the gas and go. Now, what brought this up was, um, a neighbor who lives on that corner with, stops on is that you return right on Marvin Road, um, said that a neighbor had stopped by and said, you, you need to do something about cutting your vegetation, because when you go to exit from Herod Joe to make a left onto Marvin Road, and you look to the right, uh, you can't see the bend, you can't see where you're gonna turn. Well, I actually, it was brought to my attention, I went out to inspect it, the vegetation is fine, they're really, cutting back may help slightly, but there's a bend to the road to the right, as you're looking past what was the former reasons, you know, of, of property, as you're looking down towards Herod Joe, uh, um, Newtown Road. There's the bend to the right, so what happens is that the cars are coming so fast now that when you go to make a left, it's sort of, uh, it's sort of dangerous. Uh, the way that the road bends to the right as you're looking down. So, the neighbor whose property was being cited about vegetation said, is there any way to help that situation by putting a possible mirror, uh, on the, I guess.
In your backyard.
So.
At a 45-degree angle from the exit from Herod Joe, so when you were looking, it would be on Innisbrook side.
Nope.
And you would have these large mirrors. I have seen them, I've seen them all over the place, you've seen them too. That you could actually look, now, I don't know, it's not an attractive thing, um, and, you know, I'm just throwing it out there, that the speed of the cars are so intense now, that really make a left from Herod Joe, it's kind of got to the point getting now a little bit dangerous.
So.
That's just a thought that was brought up by a neighbor, and I said, you know, I'll bring it up in an open topic and see what everybody thinks.
So what you're referring to is a site distance issue, um, and DOT has standards in which, regardless of, you know, how you feel about the, the vegetation being appropriate or not in, in the bend, they will require a certain standard of site distance. So what I can do is report that to them, because it's, that's actually their road, and they'll come out and assess it, and they'll either impose the property owner to cut it back, or they'll do it themselves to open up that site distance, if it's not within their parameters.
We could always make an old left turn there, Bob.
Then I know, I always just go out the right. I can't wait for the roundabout, it goes loop-de-loop, but anyway, but it is, it is, uh, it's just, you know, it's a finish just because of the, the traffic, the speed. But do I feel like one needs to be there or not, and, you know? I, I look, I poke myself out past the stop sign, and then when I do, you know, take a left, I, you know, you gotta stomp on it a little bit, you gotta go, you know, but it's just gotten busier, that's all, just from a safety aspect. But Christina, maybe you can follow up on that. It isn't so much the vegetation, the vegetation's cut back, it's now the traffic and the speed of the traffic coming down toward, you know, which has still been the same problem, that's why we're putting in the, uh, electronic, uh, monitoring device for speed, that's why it would be an appropriate place towards right in that stretch.
Okay. We'll report it.
And then I wanted to mention one thing about Mayor Plino's comment about the road damage. We don't have a certain policy in place that basically says if you're gonna put heavy equipment on our roads, you have to let us know, but what we do have is an ordinance that would prohibit anyone from damaging our streets and being held liable if they did damage our streets, so if you have photographs, or if you see someone out doing that, definitely take a picture, uh, because if the damage does result in something that we can seek punitive damages, we definitely will. So we have that, we have that means.
And I don't know if considered damage or not, quite frankly, I took pictures, it's hard to tell from the picture that I took, but it was clearly from his machine that when they removed it from the trailer, um, you know, and turning on the plywood, and again, he tried to do the best he could, but that size equipment, I think, is, is alarming for, to see it in there. It almost was like you would see something like that at the beginning of a development, rather than, you know, after the factory of homes and you're removing all these things, it quite easily could have been a, a smaller piece of equipment that could have done that, but, uh.
You have pictures?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, if you can send them to me, I'll look into it.
I'm always taking pictures, Kim, I'm always watching.
The other question is, is the, the tree.
Creepy Joe.
Violate our tree ordinance?
Uh, two things there, is the, if it's the property I'm thinking about, he pulled an, he pulled an application, or he pulled a permit. The way our tree removal permit, or tree removal ordinance is, um, all over the place, if you, in my honest opinion. What I mean by that is that it, it's basically, it says you can't do X, Y, and Z. And then as in you can't remove it if it's certain amount of diameter, if it's a camphor tree or under this. But then yet, it then says, well, if you remove these trees, then you can just potentially be fined or be, have to pay for what trees you remove. There's also special exemptions, which most of Firethorn is in part of that, where it's like if your lot was created before two thousand four, then you're exempt from that.
Right, okay.
So.
So is this, so do we, do we need to revamp the tree ordinance?
I'm working with the county on that.
Okay.
So the new urban forestry person.
So I can take trees down if I, if I graded my lot for two thousand four?
What our ordinance states.
Jump on top of that.
So, yeah, but, but that, and I know the, the person that, that did the work, he came in because somebody said something to him. He just moved to the area, didn't know anything about it.
So, so is that on your list of stuff that needs to be cleaned up?
What do you mean?
The tree ordinance list?
It is, yeah.
It's a long list.
But it's something we should also consider getting out to the neighbor and HOAs to kind of do.
I was gonna say the same thing, I was gonna say the same thing, Joe.
Yeah, we had a lot of, a lot of turnover in the village, a lot of people don't know about ordinances and they need to be aware. Because once you cut down, that's it, it's done.
But that, but some of these things that we're talking about can be put into the, the, the list that goes out.
Yep.
And say, oh, by the way, this is, oh, by the way.
Yep. It's on my list now.
We can get, put a communication piece together about that, about tree removal requirements.
Well, but, but I mean, as we, as we talk about all of these different ordinances, that should be immediately put on the list so people know about.
Yeah, especially stuff that like we see as a concern.
If you have, if by chance you have large equipment coming in to do something, to work on your property and they damaged the asphalt, please let them know that if they damage it, we have an ordinance that will hold them accountable for any damages that are there. If you have a tree that, that, let's start tree, whatever ordinance we talk about should immediately go on the.
Do you just want that as an automatic or? We got it.
We got it, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Good.
That's all I had.
Yeah, okay, you guys good? Were you telling me to pay attention? Okay, next up is E, Village Hall, no, E Communications, sorry, 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 sorry.
Tricking me, tricking me there. Let me get my time spent here.
Yeah, okay, we're going back to the topic real quick.
Just, just real quick. Austin won the over and under on coffee with council. The up, he picked the under, the number was two, and we had zero. But to my point, sitting here watching, people will go to the, people will go, not take a left turn on Marvin, they'll come down and they'll turn around here in the church.
Yep.
Or in Village Hall, too.
Right.
Constantly.
I don't know if we can do something with the church, have them put up a chain in their, in their. It's easier to go down than to pull in and back up with the traffic that's going on.
Can we add a sign that says use traffic circle to our no left turn, like directive?
Guarantee that, the encroachment agreement. By the time we get that approved from DOT, the roundabout will be built.
Well, I just, I just.
Can we just put a sign, can we put our own sign on our parking lots?
Yeah, no turnaround.
No turnaround?
Use roundabout.
Same thing?
Well, you get signed off, I don't know.
You know, directive, because they do all the time, turn around, turn around, turn around here. And it's, it's not safe and it defeats the purpose.
It's kind of an exemption.
Yeah, okay.
Cause it's a way there, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Do you want us to do that?
How do we enforce it?
If I'm sitting here, I'll go out there and I'll yell at somebody.
I mean, it's a safety issue, it's, it's hard enough to get in and out of this parking lot and it's a safety issue and it kind of defeats the purpose of, of a no left turn, cause it causes traffic backups.
Can we do it for the church, I mean?
I may ask them, be like, hey, people are tearing up your driveway.
They're just adding to.
We'd love to add, we will pay for the sign and we'd love to add it, is that okay with you?
Yes.
We do that?
Okay, all right, you guys good with that, Joe and Bob? Okay, Bob's like, I don't know, I'm just gonna give you a thumbs up.
Yeah, I just.
Okay, you good with open topics, sir? All right, E Communications, discussion of October twenty twenty-one, communications, Austin Yao.
So you got the draft list here. I was just thinking, you know, we hadn't had many time capsule ideas and I haven't had many serious ones from the public, I've had a few pranksters.
Oh, yeah, I've, I've seen some of those.
Yeah, so I just quickly threw a couple more ideas in for the time capsule. Going to child plans, photos, from events, groundbreaking ceremony, which means we're, maps we wanna throw in. As for the topics, pretty standard stuff, holidays, meetings. If there's anything else you wanna get, wanna add, you can. I've got, I've already put the tree removal and road damage requirement stuff down, so we'll come up with stuff for that.
Marvin Fall Cleanup Day is October the sixteenth.
Which, how?
It is.
It's on my calendar.
Oh, I must forgot to put that in my calendar, okay.
Austin, how much photographic old, I don't know, how many, how many pictures have we had at Village Hall as it's been constructed?
Whatever everyone texts me, it's not, not that many.
I got, I got.
You, yeah, I know you've taken a couple, I just took.
Jamie's had some, so we have, we have an amount.
Okay.
We can put those in, we can put those in.
Yeah, I'd like to put those in the time capsule, because that kind of is.
And we need, and we need to keep like, as they're doing stuff, I'd actually like to take a field trip over there.
Well, what would be nice too is we pick some, like maybe six, select, maybe before, before and, you know, like before they even broke ground and stuff like that, and put it, and had those pictures put up on Village Hall.
Oh, yeah, on the walls, yeah, I agree, like on the walls.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And we definitely want a picture of this Village Hall to put in the time capsule. Yeah, um, yeah, I've got Marvin Fall Cleanup Day on October sixteenth.
What about a photo when they tear this place down?
Sure, not too.
That's a joke.
But actually make sure that that's on our park track agreement.
What is?
The fall cleanup.
Yeah, cause I completely forgot about it.
Yeah, me too, so. Yeah, make sure that PRG gets that on their agenda to remind them.
I have already sent out the agenda, so we'll add it on Tuesday.
That's fine, just, just make sure, don't let me forget. Um, I've got Columbus Day, October eleventh, I didn't see it on there.
I purposely left that one off. Because for half peop, for half of the population, that is Columbus Day, for the other half, it is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I don't want to step that.
So put them both down, they're on the calendar.
Okay.
It's still Columbus Day, it's still Indigenous Peoples' Day, put it, put it on there.
Just include all the holidays.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do. October thirteenth is a Union County Public Schools early release day.
I forgot to check the schools.
That's okay.
What was it, the thirteenth was what?
The thirteenth is an early release. And October twenty-fifth is no school. And that's all I got.
Um, what's in?
Joe, Bob, you guys got anything you wanna add to the communications? Nope, okay, Joe? Nope, okay, Andy, Jamie?
Or, I, I'm not involved in this, but I'm just gonna ask.
Yeah.
Halloween's on a Sunday night, are people gonna trick or treat on Sunday night or are they gonna trick or treat on Saturday night?
I have no idea.
Is that, or is that, is that something that's left up to the HOA?
Oh, that's, that's just, I, I don't step in that, people, the neighborhoods decide.
Well.
I think it's gonna be Sunday night, cause.
I mean, Sunday night's fine.
Sunday night's fine, totally fine, I thi, I think it's, will probably be Sunday night.
We gotta, I, I think in the past, we've had some miscommunications on some of that trick or treat stuff and it had to do with weather conditions and other things. And some people just go.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, so those of us with, with kids that age, Kim and myself will probably get the four one one on that a couple of weeks prior to.
I mean, I'm thinking.
Start to develop.
I'm thinking it's gonna be Sunday, but.
We can throw it out there, when we figure out what's going on in the community, we'll, we'll hear about it.
All right, cool. All right, I'm good.
Everything.
Okay, anything else for communications, you good?
I will say one quick thing, just driving here and seeing Village Hall this morning, it's coming down Newtown Road and I can see it over the hill and the horizon, it looks really good.
It does look good, I saw it, you know, it does look really good. Okay, next up, F, Village Hall, Christina.
So, obviously there's been a lot of activity in the last couple of weeks.
I'm sorry, A, contingency fund update, sorry. Sorry, I gotta go by the agenda, Joe's a stickler. Rains, Joe, rains.
Oh, my God.
You guys.
So the contingency update, this is a list of all the change orders that have been approved to date. And a couple of other things that have also been amended, like the Terry Con, Dewberry agreements. We do have an urban that has to be amended based off of the site plan changes with the generator and the well. I have not added that in yet, cause I'm still waiting on the, the change order for that. Basically, we've committed about a hundred and fifty thousand of our two hundred contingency, leaving us a total of fifty thousand left. So we're pretty much running short on those contingency funds. Not a whole lot of changes can be made based off of what we have available here, but.
But aren't we gonna get money back for like sewer?
Yeah, yeah, like I mentioned earlier, we're gonna reimburse the capital project fund. Y'all will still have to reallocate those funds back into contingency if we wanna do that. Cause basically it's just going back into the capital project and we have to reallocate money into the contingency if, if we wanna go there. So what'll happen is, you'll see this number stay at fifty, and if we need more, then we'll come back and re-.
But, but we're getting, but we're putting money back in the capital, yes.
And I think that probably the right thing to do would be put it back into contingency when those funds come back in, because I think.
That's what I was gonna say, can we not do that?
We probably will run into some more things and.
Can we not, so like the money that we're getting back for the AV, the wa, the water, the sewer stuff, can we not take that money instead of putting in capital projects, can we not put it in contingency?
Well, technically speaking, we have not spent the AV money, we have not committed it, cause y'all haven't approved it yet. So technically speaking, it's still in the capital project now, just waiting, waiting to be spent, so we.
I know, but then can't we put it in, am I not saying that right?
No, I get what you're saying.
The ARP funds directly into contingency that we are going to reimburse from contingency.
So that it doesn't look like we went so much over.
What, what we could do is take some of the money that's floating right now in the capital project, the AV that's not committed, the technology that's not committed, cause y'all haven't done that. Let's just say it's a hundred thousand dollars and go ahead and reappropriate that into the contingency, because we can spend the ARPs directly from ARP to.
Their buckets, to this bucket.
To that one, so it, we don't have commingling, so to say.
You do, you do.
Do we have to go back into capital funds with it, or can we go direct to?
Y'all have already, I think y'all have already committed that to, from the capital to them, so we just have to do a budget amendment on that. But I'll go back and look, it's been so long ago.
Cause I'd like to put that sewer line back into this, right?
It's still, it's in there now, it's still floating in there in the capital project. You know what, what I'll do at the next meeting is I'll do a capital project update so y'all are, I can explain.
I just want, I just wanted to look like we haven't gone over as much.
And the furniture, the furniture came directly out of this bucket, right? So the furniture re, the ARP funds to reimburse for furniture should definitely go back in here too, right?
Yeah, but we have not paid for that yet, cause they wanted us to pay a deposit, but I told them we weren't going to. We could potentially pay for a portion of that with our ARP and then not have to worry about putting it back.
And then pull it all out of here.
What's this number twelve sign?
This end balance to where it doesn't look like we spent so much out of it.
That's the, the, the plan's only called for Village Hall, or Village of Marvin on the front.
Cleans it up a little bit to the public.
Okay, so let's take that out of advertising.
I'd rather do it on the front than to do it on the back.
Right, cause you don't wanna, I mean, if, if there's too much moving around, it feels sleepy.
It's tourism.
Including myself, so maybe easier for the public to follow how this is going.
Yeah, we haven't paid yet, so that's not a big deal.
Okay, we good, any questions for Christina on this? No questions from you, Joe, none from you.
Just one, I did a walkthrough of the, the Village Hall and stuff and put my heart out.
Two houses like walk there.
And some of what's gonna be what. Can't understand what was brought up, is the table you all are sitting at, is not gonna fit?
You have to, you have to have your, your, your safety stuff, you have to have a hard hat and vest on if you go on that site.
They got them, if you go.
Yeah, just saying.
Bring the, bring the hat you were, bring the hard hat you were issuing for the break ground.
I will.
And a, and a vest.
I got a vest.
But the understanding was the table, we were gonna utilize the table you're sitting at right now.
Yep.
And that's not gonna fit now?
After.
Who said that?
After hours you can walk through.
Uh, it was taught by two people, including, what's his name, Trap, what's the guy, what's?
Tyler.
Tyler?
I mean, it has, it has a leaf that you can take out, so at the very least, we can take them.
The table where you're at has a leaf?
And then, that where your cup is.
I'm pretty sure it fits.
Yeah, this, this table goes down, so if it doesn't fit as it, as it is now, there's about, looks like about five feet, we can take off of it.
Okay.
You think this is five feet?
I think it, I think it's for our, um.
We're like two and a half?
I'm pretty sure it fits.
Were we gonna use that for the close session, her?
Yes.
That's a four foot leaf.
Anyway, it just was, someone mentioned that to me, I don't know if that was you, Andy, Sam?
Yeah, it's tight in that room, it definitely is tight for this table, we were looking at it, but we'll see if it fits or if it doesn't fit.
It's eleven inches.
But it is, it's gonna be tight, cause that, that room isn't as long as this room, so.
All right, we'll figure it out, okay, what else, Joe, anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, uh, generator relocation, okay.
That's fun, sorry, I meant to blow this up, you guys probably aren't, I mean, I'll see it, but, Jesus, Christina. Sorry. If you look for a small.
Oh, that's on my window.
Small rectangle.
It's far.
That got highlighted, that's where we're putting the generator.
That's right, they keep you guys in the back.
Only one is running.
Oh, yeah, that looks great.
Trying to figure out.
I can find it in the back corner where we don't see you.
That's where I wanna be, nice and quiet.
This, hang on. That right there is where the generator would go.
Look at the farmers market when it's.
Okay.
And then the well is.
Of the property.
That'll be good.
I can barely hear you, Christina.
Tell them the ju, the well is W and the generator.
The well is W, the generator is the rectangle.
Looks like the generator's in the woods.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Are y'all okay with that general area?
So, guys, have you, and Bob, have you been to the site yet?
I, I was passed by there, but no, I'm not physical.
So when you, when you're standing in the building and you can, you can look out the back door, you're looking at that, the ditch. The ditch looks much different now, they've graded down by the building, but there's a big straight up sheer cliff on the other side of the ditch. Just the other side of that's where the generator would go, it's not far from the building, it just looks like it in this plan.
I'm, I'm sure of that.
It's, it's, it's right there.
I, I have a question to ask, my, up in Connecticut, my stepdaughter, when we've gone up there, she has a generator, you know, on the side of her house. And I've always kind of contemplated getting one, but I could actually see it in place. And of course, there's a big propane tank that, to operate that. And I guess the question I have is, is there, I just, just inquiring, is there a propane tank that's gonna be out there too?
No, but we're on natural gas, it's gonna be piped underground, you'll, there's no.
Cool.
Okay, well, I'm gonna move forward with getting the change orders for the irrigation lines from that area for the well and then the generator relocation. Just gonna ask Randolph to go ahead and get me change order amounts for that, so it means it's already mobilized and would make sense. Any, any problems with that?
Nope.
Area, okay.
Okay, next change order for irrigation.
Well, I, I was waiting on a estimate back from Randolph, I'd asked him, but they wanted to have some time to assess the site plan. So I should have that back at the next meeting.
Okay, audio visual security access control update.
So, much to my dismay, we had to go out for RFP on these projects. We separated the two of them so that some could bid on, you know, one versus the other or both if they wanted to. We will get those back on Monday and you should see this on your next agenda item to move forward.
Okay, anything else for Village Hall?
Yep, just wanna give you a general overview of where they're at. As you know, there's been a lot of development over the last couple of weeks, the windows were delivered on site.
And they're in.
And they're in, the celestial reframing is up, it was up today actually, which is a little.
Cupola.
Cupola. Looking ahead, the framer should be done already, the roofing, underlay and shingles will be installed on the week of nine twenty-seven, so hopefully.
In progress.
Yeah.
I looked at it this morning, they're actually laying it now.
Where are they laying?
Roof.
Same as the grader. And then the remaining underground utilities should be started here shortly. And then the mechanical should start actually next week for rough in, I actually think they've already started.
I don't know if they've done mechanical, they're doing electrical roughing right now and they, Tyler indicated. And they, Tyler indicated to me that the roof will be on today and they should be putting siding on next week.
Yep, that was my next thing. And then that's it. The generator, generator will be delivered soon.
I don't mean to steal the thunder. I just had a meeting with Tyler here today.
So if we were just looking at a, a plan, are we ahead of schedule, on schedule?
We're supposed to be in by December, so I'm gonna say we're behind.
Well, they're, they have eight months from the time we let the project, so.
Which was April.
I'm not pointing blame. I'm just saying if you, if we were to look at.
They got backed up a little bit with permitting, but I think that, I mean, they're, they're moving along.
It seems to be they're moving along pretty quick.
Once, once they're dried in, then weather conditions are not an issue at all. Because they're, they're dry under roof, so they can do all of their interior stuff. So it's just, I mean, and that's where they're at today. Today, they will be dried in. They have a roof on, they have all the windows in, they're gonna board.
Doors?
They're gonna board off all the exterior exits with the exception of the one that faces the construction trailer. And they're gonna put a temporary door on that. Because Tyler told me, he said, because we're using residential style doors, he doesn't want to hang them because he doesn't want to get destroyed in the process. He said, commercial doors are a little different situation. They usually put them in. So he's gonna just do temporary plywood doors to secure the building in the interim. So they're, they're really moving along pretty quickly and there'll be a lot of interior progress real soon. Because they're, they're just trying to get it all closed up and sealed up from the elements and then they can just roll.
And then we've picked out everything that we need to pick out, correct?
I think they're.
Do you still need lobby, lobby furniture?
I just asked a question because.
November, you got three, three months. A lot happens in three months.
Oh yeah.
You're gonna see a lot of activity over there. You guys will be.
We can do a walk through.
Moving along pretty quick.
Especially this past week, they've made some huge strides. Once they got the in there, got done, the framing, then it's really been moving along quick.
Okay, we good?
I want to report a walk through.
Uh, no, not at all.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, G reports an update. Managers report. Christina?
Berwick is being completed, if not done already.
Is it done? When I was in.
They're, they, and they're actually.
Not done. I stopped and talked to the guy. They, they had to really dig down and, I don't know, they're putting in some sort of grate that will catch that water in that corner. So there's, it was not a small project. And he, he said something about DOT grinding down the road, part of the road, or, you know, whatever. But they, they, it's gonna take a couple more days, I would think. Based on what I saw, I stopped in there, they were adding concrete to a certain area and they were gonna put in some sort of grate system that would catch the water.
That's not a bad system. That is great.
Well, I, yeah, that's probably why they were dragging their feet getting it done, because it was expensive.
Sure, okay. All right, so y'all can just keep me posted as you normally do on that one.
We'll stop with the photos.
Keep the photos coming.
So pre-salt plan, this is a pretty, pretty big one. So I don't know where y'all want to go with this, but you know, as we've taken on new roads over the last several years, this is something that we have not really considered. Storm planning, plowing, brining, that sort of thing whenever there's a snow event. And as we are increasing in roads, I think this is something that either DOT's done in the past or individual HOAs. But as these roads are, you know, were taking over, there is an ounce of liability that we have in the event for emergency response to property owners that have houses that are up hills or down hills. Mike and I rode all of our streets last week and we discovered a lot of streets that have really heely situations. Heritage Oak is one of them. Wood Cliff is another one. There's certain areas of firethorn. And it's something where we're gonna put together some, some numbers for brining and potential plowing. Maybe not necessarily entire subdivisions, but those areas that are of concern. So I'll get some numbers back to you guys.
What did Chaplin say?
He, he did say there is some, some liability issues and he's further looking into it, but.
I'm not a huge fan of the.
Wouldn't we just follow, wouldn't we just follow what DOT did before? Which was nothing.
That's what I thought too, Joe.
That's what Chaplin's looking into. He, he, he wants to make sure he gives us the right response. He has not prepared a written response, but he thinks that there, there could be. DOT could potentially have some exemptions because they're such a large, you know, organization. There, there's probably some statutory exemptions. But again, that's something that Chaplin needs to assess and look at in further detail. But we'll have a actual legal report back to you at the next meeting or the next work session.
And numbers?
So should we have got a four-wheel drive truck? And a plow, a salt shaker?
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get numbers too.
All right, anything else?
Yes. Sorry. I'm bringing this back again.
Dirk, you need to go plow.
You can take one and pass it on.
What is that?
Or pass it on the side. No, just pass the pictures around, like flip through them. Let me give it to them. Give them the pictures. The pictures. Awesome, give it to them. So several months ago, we had, when we were starting some sidewalk repairs in Weddington Chase. We had an issue where a resident reported a broken irrigation pipe. I reported this to you guys way back then. You guys decided that you weren't gonna pay for the irrigation pipe at the time. The argument basically was at the time that where the damage happened, the employee or the contractor was not working. It was about 20 feet up the road. Since, and I told the, the property owner that, since then, they've come back and they've provided a estimate and some type of written statement from the contractor stating that, yes, it was caused by what we did. I do want to note that the area of damage is in the right-of-way. We do not allow these type of devices in our right-of-way because we do have to secure an area to repair sidewalks and that sort of thing. So you can see how close the irrigation pipe was to the sidewalk. And just naturally, when you're doing construction projects, you do have to have a level of radial area to make changes and repairs. So he's asking for you guys to pay for the bill of, it's around $500. I do want to make sure that y'all are cognizant of the fact that you're creating a precedent if you approve it or disallow it based off of.
Didn't we already set that precedent when we said no the first time?
And it's clearly within the right-of-way and it is clear that within the right-of-way, they cannot have.
It's our property. It's not their property.
Right, and it, so his argument is that everybody in the subdivision has the same issue because the builder put it in.
Go to the builder then.
The builder, right, exactly. That's where I'm going. It's like, so the builder was out of his, or whatever, out of that company's parameters to put irrigation in the, that strip.
Yep.
If they want to water it, they can water it from the other side of the sidewalk. Just do so during non, you know, like early in the morning when there's nobody walking to deal with it. But if you do want to put it in, it's at your own risk. And that's gotta be, I mean, we gotta follow the rules. We can't make exemptions for people just because. And this is why, right here, exactly why.
I mean, I'm a no. I don't even think this is, I'm good. I mean, we've already said no one time, so I'm not sure what's changed. Except that we found out more that they're in the right-of-way with their irrigation. Our right-of-way. Bob, Joe, you guys want to pay their $500?
Uh, no.
Okay, Joe?
I would, I would concur with you, Kim, that, I mean, we've made a decision on this and especially it's in our right-of-way and then we're setting precedent for this kind of thing. I'm not sure. I, I'm not sure that makes any sense for us to be fixing something that shouldn't be there to begin with. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Jamie? Andy? Okay, that's enough, Christina. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it, okay. Uh, planners report, Hunter?
Okay, got a few items to discuss and give you guys updates on. First one being the grant that we received for the sidewalk for the Marvin Loop. I guess one of the things that I need to get some direction on is that the original project timeline had everything starting in like fiscal year '23, '24. The construction started fiscal year '25. There's funds available for us to start the right-of-way and right-of-way procurement as well as the cost estimate and all that stuff that goes into the pre-project costs of the pre-project itself next fiscal year. If you guys recall, it's a reimbursement grant. I think it was what, 60, 40?
Yeah, 64 as well.
Essentially, we, we would pay all that upfront in that. Those two things in right-of-way procurement and the cost estimate and kind of the, figuring out the scope and all that is the like 20% of the total cost of the contract. And so I guess I just need to, or the total cost of what we intend for the project. I guess I just need some direction if this is something that I want to go back to CRTPO on, saying that, hey, we're interested in moving this up. The, I will mention though, the construction's most likely still gonna be programmed in for fiscal year '25. There's just no way there.
And I will note that we have, since we knew this was way down the line, we have not really discussed the mechanism for funding this. When the grant was written and requested, we, we didn't really have a whole lot of means for paying for a match other than taking out a fund balance for taking a loan out for the park and financing that portion.
You're talking about this section?
Yes.
Behind village hall and all that stuff? I thought that was closer up than that.
No, the, the grant is, is from, it's down Marvin, so it goes down Marvin Road. I think Passon's Road, and I can't remember where it starts, but then it comes all the way through Newtown and then connects all the way to Marvin Creek.
That section, that, that's been discussed. I thought it was closer in than that, but okay.
I mean, I still have a question of what do we, what is the bare minimum that the village needs to do to get this money? Because it was always linked to the Heritage District. So what does the village need to do to get the money?
So we have went round and round with that assumption with trying to figure this out. And the, the only thing that we can, there, there's no, there's no true answer to that. There's not a definition of what MHD means or what, what their definitions are. They're coming up with some guidance mechanisms. But what, in a nutshell, the reason that it was linked as far as verbalization was because when we applied for the program, you were given a certain number of points for all these things. We were given a certain number of points for the linkage to the Marvin Heritage District. So if that doesn't happen, they've already awarded it. I don't foresee them coming back and saying, well, you lost 15 points because you didn't do that.
I mean, we're still gonna have the Heritage District, but what if it's not developed? Is that okay? I mean, we're still, this is still called the Heritage District, so.
The two points there are is one, in the here, in the language for development, if the developer's required to put in that infrastructure and sidewalk. So the way, two ways you look at it is that if we have a development come in, finishes out before we actually get to the construction part of this, they can put in the sidewalk or we can take a fee in lieu and then use that money to use it part for the match. Or we can have them put in the sidewalk and we just take it out of the grant. So it, it's not like we're going to, our, our cost is going to come down one way or another.
I'm worried about what if nothing happens here? Do we lose the grant?
No, because it's still, because it's still long-term. I mean, that's part of the reason we're doing that. That's smart area plan, for example, for the Marvin Heritage District. You're building that foundation, that vision and that future. If you have that on the books, like, yeah, you're intense to get here, but we can't control, we can't control private development.
And I think that, you know, quite possibly some of this match money could come out of that infrastructure bill as well. So that's a possibility.
Oh, the infrastructure bill.
The infrastructure bill, so that's a possibility for that match.
Or it could be Powell, Powellville.
But we have to, unfortunately, we gotta figure out, you know, when that's coming.
Yeah.
And, you know.
So you guys are gonna find more out about that at WMA today?
I don't know. I mean, we can ask questions, but I, I mean, I think really, Jamie's point, we need to, to go up the chain to our congressman and ask, what's the, you know, what's the feeling on this? When is this? Because they're gonna be more in the know even than anybody else.
Yeah.
So.
I think it'll bill, so for as much as David, for as much as information that he probably gets, you might as well talk to the person that's sitting up there and living and breathing it every day. That'd be a great opportunity for him to come up and sit down and go.
That's what I was gonna say. Why don't we see if he can, Dan Bishop can come in and chat with us?
Right, and just so, all right, what do you see? Because we have many things that could.
Go ahead, sorry.
That, that could fit, that could potentially fit under that. Would, would you, and just say, do you potentially see that sidewalks? Do you potentially see that water sewer? Do you potentially? And then he can say, yes to that, no to that, and then at least you put your foot, foot on the gas, the ones that do. And then the other ones you just hold off on.
Right, because if, if that actually goes towards this direction, then that's, that helps us with planning. Like what we want to actually push towards.
Yeah. Okay, that's good. Do you need something from us on this?
Uh, like I said, do we want, I mean, we haven't had a chance to talk about it. I, but we, and I can, I can come back at the council meeting because they gave, they asked municipalities to respond if they want to move up their, beginning of their project. Now, once again, all the con, the construction part of that is still, is still programmed for fiscal year '25 and none of that's going to probably move up. But the other parts of that, we can potentially move up and.
Is that the land acquisition number?
I can't remember. I don't, but, but we, but she said that we can have till October 15th. So I can put it on the regular council meeting and we can act, you guys can give me that decision.
Wait, what? I don't understand. What do you, what do you need?
So we got the grant, but it wasn't programmed, but because of COVID and stuff, things got pushed out to like fiscal year '23, '24 and beyond.
Meaning what?
We wouldn't be able to start anything for this project until at least then.
Okay.
But now there's funds available where we can start like the right-of-way procurement and the project estimate and planning part of it as soon as next year, as soon as, yes.
Oh, yeah.
But the construction, the construction is still, there, none of that is going to move up.
But we constructed.
We can do it.
Correct, but for us to get reimbursed on it.
But that's '23, '24, '25, or '25.
'25 and beyond, yes.
Okay, that's fine. I say, but if, if they have funds available to start and it's like procurement stuff, yes, let's start.
So.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Just so y'all know, though, whatever our match is, and was crunching numbers real fast, whatever our number is for that potential match, we have to come up with that.
40%.
That's fine.
For that acquisition.
But yeah, let's, yes, if they, yes, do not wait.
And I will say that the reimbursement, we, there's a, we will get reimbursed like month, monthly to quarterly.
Okay.
So with that being said, like, that's when we're talking about funding here. It's not.
Like a year later? Yeah, I think, yes, if they're, if they're, I mean, that's me.
Yeah, if we can boot, can drive this and if this infrastructure bill money comes out like in '23, then let's get started on it.
Agreed, let's start.
We'll get reimbursed from CRTPO in '25 or '26, whatever, but we'll, we can get, get the project done because we're having.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Money to do it.
Are you guys good with that? Bob? Joe?
Yeah, Kim, to your point about not ever being developed, I mean, Heritage District has already been established. So that's kind of a master plan or in the land use plan anyways. In 10, 15 years, as I say, we may deny everything that comes across, but a future council may say, yeah, we're good with this. And so I don't see that being an issue.
Right, yeah, it's, it's been, it's in the master plan, so it's set in stone.
Well.
As far as they're concerned.
We're, we're, yeah, I get your point, Joe. We're working on it, yeah. I, yeah, that's, okay, I'm good with that. You guys good?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Ennis Brook, meeting with the property owner next week, especially since we're moving forward with the preserve trail getting developed. Hopefully to have some information for that, for, for all council and everybody for the next council meeting, but.
And Joe, we're going to that.
Joe, Kim and I will be meeting with the property owners on next Thursday. Belgro, same kind of situation. I know a bu, one of the, one property owner in specific came to call for the council, voiced a lot of concern about not putting it in. I've actually talked to some other property owners out there. They don't have a problem with it as much as I think this one does. So I, it, it's, it's still up to, I guess, council or PRD if we want to have the developer hold off or, or go ahead and put it in. I still have not had a chance to discuss with the developer about the DMU. If that's kind of, maybe if we can get that, so we can use those funds somewhere else. That's my recommendation, because it would just be kind of a neighborhood trail at that point and it's not gonna be that costly to construct. But, but I was just, you know, that's, you guys can give me some direction or I can wait to hear back from the developer and report back.
Just see what they say.
My, my thought on that, that trail is that there is connectivity up the road. It's not a necessary lake and there are some construction concerns because of terrain in there. So from my, my personal opinion, I think that. from my my personal opinion, I think that um fee in lieu is probably more the direction that we would want to go. Because it just it's not a necessary leg. I and um and there are there are some people that are against it um because of the proximity, because of the way the lots are laid out. Uh there's water issues over there. There's a lot of different things going on. I think I would I would probably rather have the fee in lieu.
Yeah, and I agree. I'll have to talk to developer about that. Um if once can they re originally told them to hold off until September. I talked to the guy back in about August. Uh but I didn't I didn't have all the information at that time, so I've just gotta get back to him and actually have that greater conversation now, so.
Yeah.
It's good. Um Marvin Heritage District update. The small area plan went to planning board last week and had and this is the small area plan part of this and um they were asked for additional information, so they did not make any type of motion to recommend or not recommend the small area plan to council. Uh so we will be meeting back in October to go over that plan again. Uh with that being said, it kind of does push some of the timeline back because I do not want to have the form-based code and that small area plan on the same agenda for them. And um and and but we are looking at maybe doing a special meeting for planning board because the other thing that they've requested was to have to have two meetings to review the form-based code, which I'm completely okay with. My only concern is that they review it one month, forget all about it when they come back up to the next month. So I'm looking to maybe try to schedule a special meeting. Um I I was gonna do with the one a week before, a week after the regular scheduled meeting, depending on our schedules and and everybody else's, but um we'll and we'll have to get together. That's just kind of my plan.
Week after would work. There's nothing in that. There's nothing in that evening.
That's I mean, I I listen.
Except coffee with council. There is coffee.
I want to make sure that it is like everybody's comfortable with it, you know. I I know that they had a lot of questions, even though they already approved the one before it that was really bad. Um so I think that's fine.
Yeah. And so and then I want to thank every council member um for meeting with me two weeks ago. Got a lot of good feedback. I my plan is to have another meeting with you guys. Probably whenever the form-based code gets kind of actually finished, because now now with everything happening, it's kind of takes some pressure off of Tom and I to to get this because we would have had the form-based code originally had to to be kind of updated, which we're at a we're about ninety percent there, but we went through it yesterday. There's some additional changes that I want to ma- make. Um but with that being said, it does kind of give me some time to really kind of dive into some really small things into it and uh when it's ready to start going back to that process, maybe even during before it fully gets to you guys during the work session meeting, I would like to go through it and get some of those comments, concerns again and um and and uh even feedback because some of that can kind of I I can go ahead and prepare for that and make sure you guys are then fully aware or one, help you guys fully understand, know what's in this, but as well as maybe make some minor changes to just smooth the process out.
Okay.
So I do have two other things after that. Um is there any questions about the MHC?
I saw that the meeting was canceled, I'm assuming because.
Yeah.
We got nothing. We got nothing.
Yeah. So there's really nothing we can do until that gets through that process.
That's what I seen. I just wanted to ask.
So all right, the two two additional things I have is I don't know if anybody's in the loop. Um there's an application through uh Union County for a amendment to the conditional zoning where the frozen custard places and all that commercial development for the cell tower. I know it's been in the in the works and stuff. For a hundred sixty foot mono cellular or telecommunications tower. Uh once again, county regulate or county authority, but it does a but um Marvin as well as specifically Amber Meadows. Uh we all received letters. There's a there's a community meeting on Tuesday, October fifth at seven. I know that's National Night Out. It's just a community meeting to get and I've encouraged all of Amber Meadows, Solomar, all of them to go to ask questions, hear their voice concerns because they are not for this because it um basically the view shed part of it. And so but it's still.
Are they gonna be able to see it?
Yeah, most likely.
If I'm fifty foot tall, you you'd be able to see it from miles.
But um but I will keep you guys in the loop on that. Uh most likely, it might be we might need to have council do a uh resolution to either support or.
Remember what I asked you about the other day?
No.
Isn't it isn't that quasi judicial?
Eh which one?
Do like talking about that? Isn't the cell tower such?
That's might be quasi with the county, but not us.
Yeah, it's not for us because it's not our application.
There me and Hunter still have.
Yeah, we we're not voting on that. The county is, but we could have a say as well.
Okay.
Just just a quick, just one quick thing. We had to check on this, but Rohit was working before with uh the county to acquire a an easement right by the cell tower. It was part of their approval, so.
That is that that is one of the conditions on it. Um so once again, that's that's a decision that you guys are, I mean, that council has to direct if that's on like because I do know that the neighboring communities are not too happy about it.
So I just I I I'm just curious on this. Why why is this being constructed now? I thought that everybody was going to five G and that these towers were gonna be obsolete at some point.
You're uh I I have no idea. That that's a que- like I I I'm not really a hundred percent sure on it. Um and that's part of the reason there, I guess, having that community meeting where people can kind of ask those questions because I don't for for all I mean, with it being in the county and all that, I I called the county to try to get as much information. They gave it to me, but I still don't know the logic or anything or why that property.
Yeah, I mean, just uh I mean, with because you see all through Valentine, they're putting up all the the new five G. Everything's going five G. Uh these these huge towers for four G are just not gonna be needed anymore. I mean, they're they're phasing them out. We're moving to the next phase, so.
I don't know.
I don't know what unless there's something else on this tower besides just cellular that that they're trying to do.
It's it's the 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 size of the tower is to promote co-location because of of multiple telecommunications providers. I don't know. I don't know the technology behind it between the five G and how that does because it gets to there's we've gotten questions slash sort of a submit on potential five G nodes here in Marvin and we're not really sure. I mean, and I don't know how they all tie into one another. And I'm that's a question that I that was that I would I I actually made it right. I told somebody at that um I uh to ask that question for me during the virtual meeting since I won't be there for National Night Out.
And it's it's something else that I uh now that you've mentioned that about getting potential five G nodes in Marvin, I'd like to do a little bit more uh research on environmental impact on that if that was something that that they're wanting to come here because I've heard some negative things. And I'd like to know one hundred percent from a technology side of it, what the advantages and disadvantages of all that is before that stuff gets starts really coming to us and we have to make decisions on this stuff because that's.
Yes.
Probably down the pipe.
You made a very good point because we don't have any language in our zoning ordinance to regulate small cell is what they're considered. The the state changed the terminology, the language, the regulations, all of that like last year to allow for five G small cell to kind of where it where it doesn't have to go through the process of the large one. But we but so we um I I've been in I talked to Chaplain earlier this week and that's something that I'm gonna be trying to get in the pipeline for planning board as well to into you guys and 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 hopefully I honestly, it will they'll probably be language brought to you by in the November meeting. Just in case.
Start doing some research then.
Okay.
But we were basically, we're gonna have to have language regardless if and we're gonna try to figure out how do we regulate it and the hard thing is is that it's kind of needed, but where is it? But where do you put it? And and it's the same thing like the cell tower and everything. It's like people don't want them in their backyards and I completely agree. I understand. And um and so that's what we're gonna that's when going developing this ordinance, we gotta I've gotta kind of put that into figure out. Okay, do we one, do we really want this? And what legal authority do we have to to have some of these regulations? But two, where do we want where would we want to see them or where do they need to go? I don't know. There's just a lot to think about.
Yeah, there's well, and that's something that I don't understand yet a hundred percent on the five G is I know that they're that they have to be more humorous. They're much smaller profile, much lower, all that kind of stuff. They're not like big gaudy things, but they have to be more humorous. Can be closer together than than the ones that are in place now, so. And and I've heard some negative things about environmental impacts, so I just want to make that make sure that we know exactly what the environmental impacts are before um you know, we get too far into this.
Yeah, I understand. The last thing is you brought it up. You guys mentioned it roundabout lighting. Uh you they they did submit it back to DOT for approval and I actually got an email like during the meeting saying that they received it back, but I'm not sure.
You need power submitted?
Yeah. But I'm not. He basically, he said he resubmitted a new plan and they just responded back. So I'll I'll have an update about that the next meet at the council meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Make sure you put that in there.
Hmm?
What what did he say?
Put Jamie Kumpfow chicken in the.
So what? Yeah, with the roundabout plant plans have been resubmitted. DOT has gotten them back to junior power on it. I don't know what the what the status is. It just got back today, so I will have that information for you guys during the regular October meeting.
Awesome. Anything else? Anything else, Hunter?
Oh, I know. I thought you were asking everybody else. No, I'm good.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Hunter? Okay, next up, agenda items. Number one, review of action items. Austin?
Yes, I've got. Okay. So Derek will get Derek or Derek will get with the Urban Forester about the Village Hall underbrush or that EU. Who's getting with the Urban Forester?
Um we'll we'll do a collaborative approach. We'll do an assessment for the yard brush and then we're gonna get a quote for the underbrush.
Um you will execute the contract for the Preserve Trail. Uh you'll look into short-term loans for future road assessments. We'll get three banners for the Fall Town Hall meeting and get a food truck. Uh look into sightlines with NCDOT from Heritage Oaks on the Marvin Road. Hunter will eventually clean up the tree removal ordinance.
Wasn't it the the tree planting? What I mean, all of that can be.
That I guess that's already on there technically.
Yeah, it's all that's that's all.
It's already on.
Tree planting slash removal ordinance?
Well, what I'll say is that I when I met with the county, the um the Urban Forester, we I gave him our ordinance. I said, hey, I'm not an expert at this stuff, but there's some things in here that are doesn't make sense to me. It didn't make sense to him apparently either. And um what I so.
So let's make that all encompassing.
Yeah, that's that's what I was. We're gonna I'm going to be over the next couple months. I don't I don't know. I gotta get back with him. Multiple uh revisions to our tree planning, protection, all of that stuff. Um so if you have, if you just want to make that more generalized.
Yeah, that's good.
We'll take care of it.
We'll get a no turnaround sign. We'll get no turnaround signs for the these properties here.
Make sure the church is okay if we stick it in the yard.
I'm sure they'll be thrilled.
I'm sure they'll be thrilled.
Um other than that, uh I'll get with PRG about the cleanup event.
Okay. I'll just carry on. Uh food truck, Town Hall Day. Uh we'll look for the National Night Out banner and figure out why it's not up yet and try to get it up. HOA slash residence list email about the tree ordinance and the road damage ordinance. I don't know if you said that already. Um report the site distance issue on Heritage Oak to DOT. We'll update you at the next council meeting on the Capitol Project for Village Hall, so it's a little bit more clear. We'll assess the council table here to make sure that it's okay. And the well location generated location will be secured based off of what was approved today and I'll get the change orders for those. And CRTPO meeting October. Oh, at the October meeting, we'll have the the numbers.
Scheduled meeting with Dan Bishop. About uh infrastructure bill.
There's one thing that I can.
Yeah, do we want to do that through WMA or do we want to do that just Marvin?
Just Marvin. You can update WMA. Or do it through WMA. But I'd like to be there.
Well, you can always come and sit in the gallery. It's an open meeting.
I know, but I want to be able to talk.
Well, that's up to Joe whether he lets you talk or not in the meeting.
Joe's like, what what happened?
I wasn't listening.
Joe's Airbnbing it up there. He is. He's he's working on his schedule.
He's 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 approving rentals. He's collecting.
I'm just getting all excited for a council comment.
Oh, okay. Actually, we're removing council comments today. Those are gone. No, I'm just kidding. Okay. Anything else?
Well, I was gonna say.
Awesome. Or Hunter's got something. Sorry.
Well, uh well.
Yeah, there's always one, but I haven't done it yet.
Um but I guess this also could have been part of my update. The RV.
Oh, yeah. I was gonna ask you about that.
Nothing's been resubmitted yet. So as in I they had their, I guess, they had their staff comments from the county. I guess they don't want to do it. I don't know. But not there's there's no formal resubmit like there's nothing. The process is basically on hard or been withdrawn. So for that RV thing.
Okay, well, that's that's.
So.
All right, so you can remove that one.
Yeah. And and yeah, if you want to remove it and then if something comes up, we'll put it back on or something, but I'll definitely.
Okay, all right. Ongoing. All right. Um. Oh, what's up with the sign auctions, Christina?
Um Wedding and Chase is done. They've already collected them. We got the three hundred bucks or whatever it was that we'd agreed on and then the Cantorfield, we still have, and I've just literally discussed the potential with them maybe about two weeks ago.
Okay. What about the Menelaure? I saw Menelaure put.
That's their signs. Those were theirs, so we gave them back.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I just know, but I yes, but in addition, I saw that they had the Marvin logo put up.
You guys approved that.
I know. I thought it was great, though. I just didn't. I just noticed it. Yeah, that's what I meant. Nothing bad. Um, okay, are we gonna start advertising for the Planning Assistant in the fall? It's the fall. It's October.
We didn't budget for it, so.
Okay, so you want to just take that off?
He's got a contract right now. At some point, he probably will want to convert that, but we'll look at that the next budget year. So yeah, we can remove that.
Um can you find out where where Derek is with his spots contract? Because it's been on here for a really long time and he's never here for the action items.
Yeah, we're we're actually thinking about removing it because the financial software that we're gonna try to get, we're gonna try to tie it together.
Perfect. So we'll remove that. Look at this. Um leave that there. Leave that there. Streetlights at Belgro. What's going on there, Hunter?
That's where you were gonna.
At the bigger end.
Uh it was just public safety letting not I'm sorry, letting them know how they could get streetlights up because they had some public safety issues. I think Rohit did that before he left.
Okay.
Because that was a Rohit item.
Potentially, it might. There might be one out there now.
Okay.
We can remove that.
Okay, remove that one. Okay, MHD, we're still working on that Greenway. We're still in that Fall Town Hall, still working on that Bearwick Road. Should I just leave it on there until it's complete?
Sure.
Okay.
Or they'll let you know if it's. We can remove it.
Okay, let's remove it.
It's in process.
Uh roundabout planning, social night out. Okay, social distancing signs. We got those?
I'll check with Derek, but I did tell him to order them.
Okay, um with National Night Out, everybody's gonna be there? Joe, Bob, Andy, Jamie. It's Tuesday night.
Yeah, I'm going. I'll be there.
Okay, Joe?
What is the there?
Yep.
I have it scheduled.
Okay, uh perfect. And then can we add the Pulte Park for Hunter to keep checking with Pulte?
I've got it on what to do list.
I know, but will you just put it on here so that I remember?
Yeah, Pulte Park, what?
Pulte Park, Hunter. So when the places are done being built, we can get the park over there. What?
I thought they were pretty much done over there.
Overpriced families, the townhomes, the Pulte parks. You don't even know what I'm talking about.
I know what you're talking about, but that's yeah. Well, I'm getting all these I mean, between the this new cell tower thing, it's been frying my brain. Not really, but actually.
Maybe, literally. All right.
You can't tell you what it is or not.
Council comments, Andy.
Uh I have none. I'll defer my time to Joe.
Okay, Jamie.
Great job, staff. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on the ARP stuff. I mean, there's a lot of time that I know each of you have spent covering out what we can utilize that money for and that stuff that takes a lot of time and. And, and it takes a lot of effort to get it done. So great job to staff. Um, great job to, to council for, I mean, I, I think we really have kind of hit a stride on all the things that we're trying to get done and we're becoming more efficient, becoming more effective. We got village hall, so, I mean, great job to everyone. I mean, I don't think we give ourselves credit enough sometimes for all the things that we're accomplishing and getting done and, um, and helping the people of Marvin and helping the people of other people that come racing through here, so. But, uh, great job everyone. That's all I got.
Thank you, Jamie. Bob?
I concur with, uh, what Jamie said and, uh, you know, kind of a special shout out here to Hunter. Um, you know, as I reflect on what we're dealing with with heritage district, you know, he walked into this thing and, uh, he had to kind of quickly get brought up to speed and he's still, you know, there was still issues hanging there. And Hunter, I think, has done a great job of just diving in and, you know, kind of really double checking and looking over everything that you have, so I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. Joe?
Thank you. Um, sit back relaxed. Uh, no, actually, wanted to say the same thing. Uh, you almost stole my thunder, Jamie, but, uh, I wanted to thank staff and if your ears were burning, it's because, uh, I started the meeting off at the Chamber of Commerce by saying advice my wife gave me years ago that a person she worked with was doing really well and she couldn't speak more highly of her. And the point was, I, I, I looked at my wife, this was years ago, I looked at my wife and said, you know, you better be careful. Um, she may replace you. And I said, and she goes, well, how will I ever move up if I don't, can't find some good to replace me? And that's what I kind of led with and I was talking, kind of tooting our staff's horns. It's about surrounding yourself with the right people and the people that get stuff done and that you can work with. And, uh, so I applaud all of you. So if your ears were burning, it's because I was, I was talking you up at the Chamber of Commerce, but that meeting went very well. It was, uh, the day after the fourteenth, I think I went there and, and had a nice, uh, uh, meeting with them, talking about everything that we're doing, so. Um, second up, second up, Paul, national meeting at the meeting in person, a little under the weather, did get tested and everything came back negative. Um, real quick, as Kim was whipping the reins, were you whipping the reins while I was there? I pulled up bluebirds on the internet and it says symbolism. Just read it to you real quick. Bluebird is a symbol of hope, love and renewal and is also a part of many Native American legends. Bluebird is actually a bird that symbolizes the essence of life and beauty. Uh, dreaming of bluebirds often represents happiness, joy, fulfillment, hope, prosperity and good luck. I like, I like the thought of a bluebird, FYI. Second up, um, we have a, we're gonna do a little shout out to the Union, uh, Marvin Ridge High School Band. Um, I will tell you, we had a Union County preview where all of the schools from Union County came to Marvin High School. It was an all-day event. I was there from, you know, early afternoon all the way to the late evening, um, helping with concessions and uh, it's amazing to watch these kids progress. I watched them and I tape them each time. So the beginning of the year all the way to the end of the year and what, they, they put together a show that's amazing. And I will say, we did have a band competition our first last week, um, at Mount Pleasant. Drove all the way out there with the trailer and our, um, even with them being so new with all of this, they won the grand national championship of all the bands that were there, um, at Mount Pleasant, so shout out to them. And they took second place. Uh, we had a double header at McBee in South Carolina and took second place, uh, over there, so kudos to them. And I do encourage you guys to get out and see them and the best way to do that is at a football game. Um, and you get to see their performance at halftime. And I don't know if you guys know this, but as elected officials, there are perks and this is one. If you're looking at the screen. You guys see this?
Why don't, why don't I have one of those? I mean, I know I'm not the mayor.
I'd say, I, I'd like to ask Austin to. Look into this because the culture of UCS is elected officials. And this gets you and your family, in your media family into any athletic event.
Oh, I need one of those.
Joe, can you, can you email, Joe, can you email me about that? That'll put it on my list. It's a good reminder for me to do that.
Oh, my God.
How do you email?
Email?
This was given to me years ago and I've always had it.
Years ago? Okay, okay.
I want one of those. I, I, I pay.
As you go watch some football games or any athletic event, Jamie, I know your boys play.
I go to all of them. Yeah.
Way to get in, and, uh, this is something that I encourage you all to do.
I want one of that. Awesome. Call up right now.
Comes from UCS, so it's the county public schools.
I want one of those, like right now.
Enjoy the games.
I flashed that all over the place. I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
No, I was just saying, just go out and enjoy the games and go see the band. Um, I'm usually down on the field movement equipment, but, uh, would love to see you guys out there and, uh, you know, I even had the opportunity to flip the coin a few times, so, uh, Mr. Jamison is always looking for someone, an elected official to flip the coin, which is a lot of fun.
Oh, I'll go flip a coin. I want to flip a coin. Why does he get all, why does he get all the funs up? He doesn't even get to vote.
He, he's been holding out on us all this time so he can have all the fun. Now he's tired of it. He's gonna let somebody else do it.
You have kids in high school who automatically, as Jamie would know, become absorbed and I'd see him at the football games. I was there for my kids.
Hey, Kim and I had two, had sons playing football last year, okay?
Yeah.
I did not know that.
Yeah.
Bob watches football.
Bob knows what a football is.
So Joe, can, can Austin order those for us through the county?
I, 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 I don't know. I know it came through.
We'll figure it out.
It was just, I don't know. So many years ago, I've always had a band. It's, uh, you can go, you don't even have to stand in line. You can go through the special gate.
What?
You have automatic passes and show your ID with that.
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna need one of those immediately.
I've always been able to get to the special.
It's a right back corner though.
Council comments not being there, so.
All right.
I just happened to see it in my office and I'm like, I gotta talk about it.
Yeah, that's it. That was, that was a very appropriate council comment. Thank you, Joe.
To you personally, it is elected officials, so. But anyway, um, thank you all for everything that you all do and, uh, thanks for a great meeting.
All right. Is that it? You good? All right, thank you. All right, I'm good. Um, no closed session, so I need a motion to adjourn, uh, the village council's but, uh, work session meeting on September thirtieth at twelve oh one PM.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, I mean, motion passes, meeting is adjourned. Uh, are you two coming in? Right now.
Like what?
Signs, Bob. Did you hang up?
I've stopped the recording replays.
Signs, Bob.
Did you say, I'm in there or you gotta call me on the, uh?